Then you wanna come to folks.
So give her a little more.
Okay.
You can go.
Yeah, I'll go. Well, God bless all of you. Discrimination again.
Thank you, Zeran. Anyone else signed up to speak on this item?
No, I no one else has signed up.
Okay, great. Okay, trustees, this actual item and also the the next actual item. Are are two uh, I think really important things for this board to consider. I think it gives us an opportunity really hone in on some of our governance things, especially the next item. Executive policy manual. And because those two items have a lot of content, especially the second item. I just want the trustees to know that my plan is to not take action on either of these items today. Uh, and the board of trustees will be next Thursday at ten o'clock in the morning. Uh, we'll be posting an agenda tomorrow. And that will give us the time for the rest of the day, however long that is, to go over these items in detail. And 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 get through as much of it as we can. And then give trustees a chance to digest that material. Maybe look at other potential amendments to make. And bring those things back to the board next Thursday or first of all, both of these require two votes, bylaw six, EPM five. Uh, but before we start, I wanted to just thank some of the trustees that did offer amendments to our executive policy manual, trustee Kina being one of them several months ago. So we do appreciate that amendment that we incorporated. Uh, other trustees have noted things that still exist in our executive policy manual, like the old resource management committee still in there. And those things, just little things that need to be updated. So the the chair and our staff would love eighteen sets of eyes and others looking at these documents so that we can make any type of revisions and changes before next week or at the table next week. And I think it's really important that we all put as much of our time and effort into these documents because future trustees and future administrations and those that will sit in our seats uh, will rely on this governance document that we updated twenty twenty five, as we currently today rely on governance documents from twenty eighteen and from twenty twelve. So we're not gonna take action on this today. We're gonna have a deep dive, robust discussion. And frankly, it's the only way we can do it with nitrous seas is in this type of session. So, uh, with that being said, trustee Kina.
Well, thank you, Chair, and thank you also for allowing us to have more time to dive into it and discuss our views. Unfortunately, I'll have to share my monado today because next Thursday I have pre-arranged meeting on the Mayland. Uh, but I'll make my views known.
Sure.
The consideration.
Very bold.
And I think we'll have another vote back.
Definitely, absolutely.
Thank you.
And that was important because this is so much information to uh, uh, digest. It's already one twenty five in the afternoon and it's not, it's not practical. The asking even if you to hold your affirmative, even on the first reading, given that you still have two weeks to review the material, I wanted to feel comfortable with what we're gonna support. So next Thursday, we're gonna come in a ten minute open session. There will be nothing else. No executives such and they will be, this will be the only thing on the agenda item. And and hopefully we'll be able to find consensus by next Thursday and be able to at least hold this pass for us reading. So with that being said, the action item twenty five eleven is a revision to the Office of One Affairs Board of Trustees bylaws. Current version is March twenty 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 five, and that is to establish an optional board legal counsel position uh, to serve as a full-time in-house legal advisor and resource to board trustees exclusively. Uh, and and other miscellaneous revisions to ensure consistency and clarity. And so if if you've had an opportunity to read the action item, um, actually, I'm not even gonna make a motion on it to put on the table. It's really just for discussion. Yeah. Okay, so if you read the action item, it talked about how in our recently approved budget on June thirtieth, we provided resources for a full-time in-house board legal counsel position. The idea was that we would, at the, at the end of the current contract for our former legal counsel, which would have expired in December, um, that we would be given the opportunity to uh, see what the market could provide in a full-time board legal counsel starting in January of twenty twenty six for the remaining six months of the FY twenty six fiscal year. And then starting on July first twenty twenty seven or twenty six, which would be the FY twenty seven fiscal year. That would be a full year for this uh, board council position. And we provided not just the position, but the financial salary, the fringe, the resource on that. And this is the next step in that. So it's been in our budget. We passed it with a super majority vote of this board. We not, that still doesn't allow us to to put out a position description post for a vacancy on our website and go out to market to see if we can source it or not. We need to update, update bylaws to do that. Because in our bylaws, we have pretty clear staffing that is attributed to the board suite. And so this position, uh, board legal counsel position is written into the proposed bylaws. One of the things that was really important is to emphasize that this position is optional. Is at the discretion of the board chair whether or not to to fill this position. I I would value your opinions as well. I hope future board chairs would as well if this position was to be filled or not filled. Uh, but it also gives us the position option to not fill the position. Though it didn't exist previously, the deputy chief of staff is also an optional position. That's at the discretion of the board chair. This board supported that. But we added the optional position language into the deputy chief of staff position as well. Because a future board chair may not decide to have a deputy chief of staff and decide to go with the two trustee aid format. So we, for clarification sake, we added the word optional position under deputy chief of staff, then the bulk of the action item is in item P. And so I'll read that. It's the board legal counsel, which is an optional position. The board chairperson shall have the option to appoint board legal counsel who serve as a legal and proceed for advisory with board trustees. This position shall support the chairperson, chief of staff and board of trustees by providing guidance on governance matters, statute current policy compliance, procurement of contract review and oversight, board procedures and conflict of interest safeguards. The board legal counsel has since been drafted interviewing legal memorandum, standard operating procedures and other board-related documents may coordinate with OHA's corporation counsel via or external counsel as appropriate. The legal counsel's client is the board of trustees as a whole, all of you. And this position is intended to support the collective legal interests and responsibilities of the board. This capacity then concerns accordance with section three of the OHA Board of Trustees Executive Policy Manual. The board legal counsel shall render legal opinions on questions raised by the board and prefer legal documents under request. This position is advisory nature and shall report directly to the board chairperson. So that is what the proposed amendment reads in our bylaws. And just before I I yield for discussion from the trustees, I just wanted to pull up the action item as well and and ensure that everything that was covered in the action item was also put on the record. And because there are, I think there are some important things to to note. Now trustee Akinah, uh, you mentioned a few weeks ago, uh, wanting to know more about what this position would actually do. Chair Emerita, right, led this board for over five years and uh, and we had uh, several, at least two different legal board councils at the time. And so I'm sure she has a perspective on uh, whether or not um, this is something that the board could benefit from. But let me just pull up the action item and make sure I have covered everything.
Page seven twenty.
Seven.
Yeah.
As I'm still at the uh. Okay, so the action item, uh, uh, that I think the section to focus on in the action item would be page three, three or four, uh, talked about what the board legal counsel's in-house role would do. You know, key areas of supporting food governance and compliance matters. A big part of of the chair's office is procurement and contract oversight as the chief procurement officer and the head of purchasing agency for OHA. Um, board procedures, conflict of interest safeguards, and the review and development of legal memorandum, SOPs and other board-related documents. The board legal counsel will also advise on all OHA's issue rights as related to our kuliana and land matters. Uh, I receive those uh, from time to time through Everett, and I'm I'm sure Chair Emerita remembers receiving those as well. And and it also ensures that the board's positions align with our staff's obligations to do sure responsibilities and protection their own interests. Addition of board legal counsel uh, will provide technical and legal support to the chair in in their role as senior executive board member, uh, as a courtesy of the Papua Kaua Marine National Monument. That's another added layer of responsibility that the chair's office has. And then at the end of the day, the the full-time uh, board, you know, counsel is there to help support the standing committees in the creation of their agendas, their materials, ensuring sunshine law compliance, uh, and and also work with all of you on on specific legal matters that we have in-house. Historically, we've, I don't care remember last time if you've ever had, um, um, been a trustee, oh no, hey, chair, been here a lot longer than most of us. If we've had a full-time board legal counsel, a lot of times it's been contract. Costs a lot of money to do a contract legal counsel. Every time and and they they're talking times have other duties, other um, clients they're serving, their law firms, their other private practices. So they're not on speed dial every time you need them. And when you do call them, you're paying for that. So I, from a fiscal perspective, I think it makes sense for us to have a full-time board legal counsel in place. I think it gives us access to someone, you know, basically twenty-four, seven, five days a week during a normal work week. It gives our staff, someone uh, legal within the board suite to be able to rely on. It also doesn't preclude us from not having a contract legal counsel. We can still have someone that specializes in things like Mauna Kea or Pua Koloa or whatever specific issue that we're dealing with at the time where we might need subject matter expertise. So this board legal counsel is is someone that has um, experience and knowledge of of a corporate, you know, that type of structure, the things that that we need here. Yeah, yeah. And and I look at that in that individual, he or she that's gonna work very closely with our general counsel office and and their team. The reality is right now, you know, and I hope we get a good update soon on on three more attorneys that are gonna join OHA. But right now we got one. And that's a lot for one. And uh, you know, I I think we need the extra support in the board office that that um, will complement the administration's efforts. So I think those are the things from the uh, the action item, the timeframe, if this was adopted and 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 adopted on second reading in in September, it would be, we would then draft uh, with the board chief of staff's help and and counsel's help, a position description and uh, work together with human resources and get this um, posted on OHA's website. So we can see what the, where the market is on um, you know, attracting an attorney to come work for OHA full-time. That would, in my mind, be in kind of the October, November timeframe. And if someone in fact was selected, you know, they could start and uh, as early as the first workday in January and get them on-boarded and be ready to rock for the next calendar year. So that's, that's the timeframe piece. And of course, our budget funds the position on one January twenty twenty six. So this bylaws um, update reflects that. And I'm gonna stop there and recognize any trustees have their hands raised? Any trustees like to be recognized? Trustee Wahai?
I'm just, um, cause I don't remember. How much did we budget for it?
It's a hundred fifty thousand dollar position in in the entire year. And we put, I would guess half of that. Starting one January, so. It's in the action item? Oh, yeah, yeah, it's in the action item. Yeah, it's it's a table. So we allocated seventy-five thousand, well, a total including the fringe of a hundred twenty-three thousand one eighty-eight, which Kapu Hana can come down because now our fringe is at fifty-nine, fifty-seven percent. So this actually reduce a little bit on the fringe as well as um, the position will, uh, the fringe will reduce in FY twenty seven. So to answer your question, trustee, we put seventy-five thousand in the rest of FY twenty-six, January through June. And we put a hundred and fifty thousand from July until June of uh, twenty twenty seven. And the total cost of the position will be reduced slightly because the fringe rate, um, according to the, I believe it's the Director Budget and Finance, um, was reduced from uh, it's sixty-four point two five percent to now it's a a little less than sixty, which actually was on our action item yesterday in the B N F committee.
Yeah, we can pull it off at that price. That's, that's good.
It's good.
Yeah.
Yeah. You know, actually, you guys mind if I ask Everett a question? Everett?
This, this really is not on the agenda, but in terms of recruitment of attorneys in in your Paya and would we have challenges going to market to recruit a full-time board legal counsel? Just interested in what the um, HR response is to fill the associate general counsel position and the two legal counsel positions that you're trying to fill.
Oh, I'm sorry. So just more of kind of a generalized.
Tsunami of resumes?
Oh, um, I wouldn't say, uh, Chair, I wouldn't say it's a tsunami of resumes, but it's enough that we're proceeding with uh, interviews this week.
Great, okay. So that we could, if if this passes, we go out to market, we could get some people interested.
Uh, at that, uh, you're you're saying at the budgeted amount, um.
Hundred fifty thousand a year?
Yeah, I think that's um, in line at least with, um, yeah, I guess what we're seeing, I mean, our our positions at a lower level are attracting interest.
Awesome.
A lower salary level.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, the legal counsel position, we budgeted one fifteen. The associate general is what? So this is, what we budgeted was even higher. It's lower than the general counsel, but it's higher than the associate general counsel. So we might be able to get, uh, we don't wanna poach on your attorneys, but.
And he would, um, he would be hired, she or he or she would, he'd be hired and that would be what we pay him and that's it. Like he wouldn't invoice us every time he.
Oh, full time. Twenty-four, seven, you can call him. Trustee Emerita?
Been there, done there. I don't want no junior attorney to report to the board. I think we should have the best of attorneys. When we need them, we can go all the way up the scale for whatever we need them for. Now you can look at, uh, the reason we have a board counsel is because originally in the olden days, we had an attorney general come uh, sit at our table. But OHA kept suing the state and and the, our attorney didn't know what side to sit. So finally, the board decided we gotta have our own attorney. So they started hiring um, special attorneys. Now our board counsel uh, Klein worked for us for twenty-five years. And you know, he sat on the Supreme Court. That's the level of attorney I expect to be sitting at this table. And same thing with Naivi. If we had that quality of an attorney, we would have to pay them three fifty to four hundred a year. And do we, can we keep them busy for for the, uh, a full-time job? I don't think so. I, and I have every confidence that if we hire um, the attorneys that we need in our corp counsel office, then Everett can be more available to us with all his familiarity with the items that you checked this board council should be helping us with. I mean, that's just my outlook because I I have been working on it for so many years. If anybody knows, um, some of the stuff in OHA is Everett. I mean, even our board counsel don't know our water problems. You know, uh, and Everett knows everything about it. So he needs his, his support. Otherwise, you're right. He can't, he can't be doing all this, but he needs to hire his attorneys. But to get a junior attorney onto the board, no. I I don't think that's advisable. We need a top-notch attorney. When we are in trouble for whatever reason, you have to have confidence in that attorney and 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 call on him and have them work for us. That's just my uh, opinion.
No, and I value that because you've been here quite a long time, no doubt about it. Just, um, so we're not like, so so we're clear, right? The, what we're proposing is a is an attorney that has, is wouldn't be a right out of law school attorney. This is an attorney that has experience, is is meets, at least we've set it at a salary rate higher than we've set for the associate general counsel. It would be an attorney that would handle all the governance, all the, all the things that, uh, we would need at that level. And if we needed an attorney of that caliber, we have a list of 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 authorized attorneys that we can pull from at any time. And so we we always have that available to us. But the reality is without, I mean, at least, and I I can only speak from the experience that I've been there for the last few months, it would be extremely helpful to have that extra resource in the board suite, not just for the chair, but I think for staff, I think for the standing committee chairs, their staff who produce their agendas. There's, I think, a lot of work that 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 could be done. This is my opinion.
That's why we have that office. It's not only to service administration. It's to report to administration because they have the majority of the, of the work. When our work comes to the table, it's critical work. So we want top-notch, uh, I'm not that Everett not, so not not being salterate Everett. I mean, top experienced people, and he knows the difference between, let's say, Klein and him and and Naivi and him. So that's when we should engage the the high-powered um, attorneys because even when we go to court, that's who they recognize, who who's the attorney? If if you, if you don't have a name, you're not recognized. Look, Everett won't even go to court. Right? That's what he told uh, Naivi with the Mauna Kea. So um, I just think that how we've been operating, and as you well know, um, Chair, the bills that came in from from Klein was ridiculous, but it, that's the level of money we're talking about. He was asking us close to a million a year. And we're gonna hire an attorney for a hundred fifty a year? I don't think so.
That's much less.
Yeah, yeah, sure. I mean, a- 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 at at the end of the day, an in-house board legal counsel available to us forty hours a week for basically the same amount of money as we're spending for contract legal counsel to come here and sit with us for two days. There's, there's a resource available to us that will cost us more money if we use that resource for all the other things we're doing now that I depend on.
if we use that resource for all the other things we're doing now that I depend on with the Chief of Staff, with the optional Deputy Chief of Staff. There's a lot of initiatives we're moving, or attempting to move. And I think it, I think it would be helpful. I don't I value your, your opinion though. And um I still think it's worth giving it a shot, but.
I also think it's helpful to have the um, the counsel, uh, the counsel um be part of us so that there's a continuity between administration and the board. So that he say, oh, no, you can't do this because of this. Or to us, oh, you know, did you know that Admin is working on this? I mean, we need some kind of communication situation. Not, we're not two different entities. We're one. And we, we're here to help each other. We're, we're the policymakers, but they're the, the people that put it to work, you know? So to have one common um corporation office is helpful because you kinda keep a, a watch on the whole uh agency. That's, that's how I found it when, when I had Klein and Everett. Everett knew some things Klein didn't even know. But I didn't have to pay Klein for the days that he never helped us, you know? And yet, when I needed strong help, Klein was strong.
It, it is to emphasize though, it's optional.
I know, but that's, that's a yes.
No, it's not a necessarily a yes. It, it is, it is put there as an option for the board chair to have as many tools at their disposal as possible with the support of the board. And I mean, I, I'm, I'm a type of person that will bring these candidates to the board uh, to ensure that there's proper vetting and proper oversight if given that opportunity. And that is, that is why it is optional. Anyway, John? Okay.
Thank you. Um, so given what trustee Lindsay had said, um, it makes me think in what you're talking about, we're talking about caliber and how much I'm wondering if there needs to be a budget realignment if this were to pass in terms of what the job description would entail and the caliber that we would require to service all the needs that we may may need going forward. Cause we may find as we put the Kahea out for those that are interested to work with us and what we need from them, that caliber of knowledge, seasoned institu- institutional background in the subject matter that we are mandated to fulfill. We might find that what they need to get paid is more than the amount that is budgeted for. So I think that's something for us to consider as well. We will, we don't know until that happens. But unless we have some kind of um data to work off of in terms of what the average um position is paid for, for the, what we need. I, I'm not really sure. I'm trying to think of other organizations like us.
We were a government agency, right? We're never gonna pay market rate private practice legal fees. The Attorney General's Office and what their Deputy Attorney Generals get paid, right?
And I, I think of that too. And then I also think about, um, you know, the example was given between the pay of the governor and the pay of the UH athletics, like the coach, you know? Yeah, and then, you know, there's a big, there's a big, even though one might say that doesn't make sense, and one would say, well, for this reason, it does make sense. It's kinda like how we have our, you know, the position that handles investments versus the pay of the administrator. So, you know, these are all things to consider. We'll have a better idea as we go forward if that is the, the will of the board. Um, but with that, I feel that um, we don't know until we get more, whether it's feedback from those that are interviewing or we are able to get some data on it.
We, we can go to market and see what the market says.
Just wanted to uh get a better understanding. Can we go back? Cause you just wrote like a scope of the service that you wanted this person to provide. And it, and it, and it touches on exactly what trustee Hulu was saying to collaborate or I mean, it talks about everything. So I think we're all talking about the same thing, but maybe uh, in different per- perspectives. Cause what I'm trying to say is like, these attorneys, they get expensive when we contract them in like legal lo- lawsuits and stuff like that. But here, you have spelled out specifically what they're gonna be doing. And I, I think that's a great price, cause you understand where it should be and the amount of hours to what they should be doing and how who they should be coll- it says with the corp counsel right there. The board legal counsel may further coordinate with OHA's corporate counsel. It, it's written, spelled right there. So I think we're talking about that's what you, you're, you're telling them they gotta collaborate. You're, you're saying like for forty hours, you want to make sure that all these things happen and you spelled it out. I think in the past, we it was like, they had a big room, they had big room to do a, a lot of whatever they wanted to do, so.
Thank you, Chair. Um, you know what? Um, honestly, I'm gonna be honest with this board. I'm kinda caught on this one. I'm kinda in between. But I do understand both sides, especially with the back and forth in this conversation right now. My question would be, Chair, would they be full-time, meaning they cannot practice outside?
Full time.
So I think therefore at that point, it goes back to what Hulu's saying, potentially, we think we can get somebody for a hundred fifty thousand. And we think for those minimum requirements, we'll get them in here for a hundred fifty thousand. For an attorney potentially coming in, if this, they only gonna make a hundred fifty, we may not end up with the best, is I think what Hulu's trying to say, uh trustee Lynn's trying to say. So I, I, I agree with that as well because we do want the highest caliber. And we do want somebody separate from our general counsel, cause he's swamped doing multiple things for both sides, the board and, you know, I mean, potentially. And so we do want our own representation. And then somebody who can go in back and forth with Everett. And uh, I, I, I think the intention is not to raise the pay, right? To get somebody who can accept three hundred thousand, the best of the best, or whatever it may be, to commit to it full-time. So, uh, yeah, I'm kinda, kinda in between, just I guess to add to the conversation. Yeah.
Well, I appreciate the, the intention behind this measure. Uh, we should have first-class legal representation available to us round the clock, capable of addressing any issue. And um, that's, that's a good thing. Whether that's a full-time person in-house or a firm that we contract to um, should be examined and weighed against each other. One of the advantages of a firm is that uh, we can work directly with the senior partner and have access to all the experts in that firm, a variety of specializations when needed, and also to um have our work done at the appropriate rate. In, in law, the key thing is the billable hour. And we wouldn't wanna have a highly qualified senior uh member of the legal profession who could command potentially five hundred dollars on an hour on certain work. We wouldn't want him or her spending a lot of time doing work that is really slated for two hundred or three hundred dollars an hour. And, and so someone who has a firm like Klein did is able to parcel out that work to, to the appropriate economic level. In any case, we're gonna have to deal with the fact that we will still be through our general counsel or not a general counsel, through our board counsel engaging specialists. We will have litigation and we may have to deal with employment issues Papa Hana Mokua Kea and then so forth. So all I'm saying is that I, I think uh, we should carefully weigh the value of each of these options, whether it be an in-house attorney for the board or whether it be in alignment with a, a firm as, that we contract to which would give us a good number of options.
On our, on our list?
That's just a professional list. But to acquire a, a, a firm or a person, we need to go out on, uh, on an RFP, short RFP, and have a, a a group of people that you um.
Well, sure, to fill the position, yes.
Yeah, to, to recommend to the board, you know, which, which is what we did in the past. Um, so there's, there's no question that uh, we kinda just pick. Temporarily an interim, what you did is okay, but it's interim.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so we need the permanent process, which uh, hasn't been done. And I would like to see you do it. Um, but that's, that's what I think that should, should happen. Uh, who, I, I don't really care who, just so the board is in agreement and it is a qualified firm or individual that can handle our job. And, and when we need specialty, we can go to that different.
That was my point, is we have a specialty list of high-powered law firms, the best of the best that we can call at any time. We've got negotiated contracts. Matter of fact, Everett is working on updating those contracts at our disposal. Especially those attorneys that have subject matter expertise on certain legal issues. We have that anytime. What I'm talking about is an attorney that can help us with our day-to-day activities, help the chairs, help the subject matter committee chairs forty hours a week on staff. I think there's a benefit to that. We, 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 just, just a quick look at average pay rates. The Attorney General for the State of Hawaii, now this may be before the Salary Commission in March, but this Attorney General salary was a hundred and eighty-three thousand eight oh four. An, an average rate for a um uh, a government attorney in Hawaii? I mean, yeah, it, it can range anywhere from a million dollars a year to a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year is what law firms pay here in the state for their senior counsel. I, I mean, you know, we, we, like you said, we have interim with us. I'd be, would be interested to hear what either of them have to say.
I don't think it's working.
And still, and still.
I just bring your chairs over. Right, cause Summer is also, I'm working her around the clock uh, as the chief of, your chief of staff. And I'd be interested to hear. We, we got only like fourteen months to, while we're in these roles. So, okay, Capone, go ahead.
Um, so what question am I answering, I guess, is that?
Well, obviously, you've heard the discussion, right? Is there value, is there not? Can we get a qualified uh, superior candidate or not?
At a hundred fifty thousand a year, you're looking at your higher level um. You're not gonna get a partner, right? You're looking at a higher level associate. You're talking about someone that is looking at my next step is either partnership, maybe coming into government work, or maybe even transitioning out. So you can find someone at that level who would be qualified to be able to assist you. There would be a, a learning curve, but they would be able to assist in doing this. Um. Candidly, uh, Summer had asked me my thoughts on it before, and I said what you're looking for is it's gonna be tough. It's a fine line to thread. They'll be there because you'll find someone, you can find someone who has the quality and the ability who doesn't wanna be a partner. Right? Because that's the next pay step. We have our higher-level associates in this general range. But they don't want everything that goes with running. I don't think it will be easy, but also the hiring of the market is difficult as it is. I say that as someone who's hiring attorneys regularly. It's not easy. So you have that ability. Um. They won't be able to give you the subject matter expertise, but as you guys pointed out, you can bring in specific ones for that. So, um, for the most part, it, it was brought up in your discussion. I do have other clients. So I am available, but I'm not immediately available. I'm available for your meetings because I've been able to clear them. But if I get a call on a Tuesday, like, for example, next week's meeting, I, I will be available for, but that's not a guarantee because I haven't pre-planned it. You guys will have that if you have an in-house person. You'll have the ability for them to be required to check their email to say, hey, we've got a board meeting come on, coming up. Chair needs a script or a committee meeting. Chair needs a script. We're gonna have the following issues. Let's be ready for that. So there are benefits to it. There are benefits to, to that. There are it's not easy to do this part. So like I said, it's gonna be tough to find someone. But I have faith that you guys will. You're surrounded by people that believe in the mission itself who are willing to take less than what they can make on the market. So it is possible.
Yeah, no, and I, I was gonna say the same thing. I mean, you are looking for a mission-driven advocate, a legal advocate, but that's exactly what you want at an agency like ours. And mission-driven advocates who are steeped in experience, who have argued before the Supreme Court, the Hawaii Supreme Court, who are well-versed in native Hawaiian rights and issues, and that can also provide the generalist kind of um breadth of experience to this role. I know many a candidate who fits that bill, who are working in nonprofit organizations, who are very, you know, have a depth of experience. You have some people on your staff already, Nina Alalei um came with that kind of experience. But because we are entered, because someone like her or myself are entering positions that are not um specifically prescribed to be legal in nature, we cannot actually wear our legal hats in all of our spaces. And so we're precluded from providing the kind of broad legal counsel that if we were in a position that allowed for, like, your job description is to provide this kind of advice and counsel, you'd have that available to you around the clock because we all work around the clock. And, and I think there is only a plus to having that kind of um option. Uh, I think Chair has explained that you still have, you actually, I think, save money on the side of uh securing subject matter expertise to help be the outward-facing representative for your issues. So we can still secure litigators who are really well-versed in environmental rights, who are really well-versed in real property, all of the things, but you are literally using them only. Really well-versed in real property, all of the things, but you are literally using them only to serve you in that purpose. You are not using them to serve you on a day-to-day basis, to answer all these questions, charging you the billable rate of five hundred, six hundred dollars. You are getting somebody who is mission-driven, committed to this work, and at your service. I will also say it's gonna be a nice compliment to the work of the Chief of Staff, it's gonna be a really great compliment to the work of the Board Secretary. The Board Suite will become a very professional, well-oiled machine. Um, working exclusively for the interests of this board and these trustees. I don't, there is no better. No better option, I think, especially for the price that you're going out into market for.
Thanks.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, Chair, I think this is a good, robust conversation. Main thing we have, uh, because we're a government agency, I think we, we need to, we, we don't need to reinvent the wheel. Because there's already models out there that we can replicate, and in terms of pay parity, start there too. And so, um, you know, to. Not to belabor the point, but I think. Because we, this is not an action, is this an action item today? Okay, yeah, so we got about a week to, okay, and talk amongst ourselves too. Yeah.
Yeah, we're not gonna vote on this today. Um, I, I will say if, if, you know, we pass the budget. So we kind of, we already half-approved this. Position and the resource is in our budget. We've, whoever voted in the affirmative, voted for this partially. This requires the finished product, get across the finish line. If we don't wanna support this and pivot in another direction, then we probably need to realign and move that resource into contract. Because we're gonna need a lot more money to spend in contracts. We will. Klein was costing five hundred thousand a year. I think there's a better value here, but, but that's, that's up to us to think about, and we can think about that over the next week.
Now, if his contract was a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, and almost one year he's been here, he didn't spend a hundred thousand. And that's how much we used him. So it's, as you use, you gotta pay. So, if you don't use them, you don't pay, but if you need them, they're there for, you know. But that's the caliber we had for hundred fifty, you're not gonna get the caliber over here for hundred fifty.
Chair, we don't know that.
Okay.
We don't know that until we try. And that's all I'm asking.
Trying to, to staff his office.
Right. No, that, that's why I asked, how he's doing, at least, it's good to hear he's having, he has some resumes coming in. Which are between one fifteen and Associate General Counsel. So he has.
Oh, yeah.
Possible people that, that he's gonna staff on his team, that are between a hundred fifteen and one twenty-six. We are at one fifty. So. I think there's a shot, but, you know, thanks for the suggestions, both Summer and, um, and, uh, Kaponu. Anyone else have anything? It's not, we're gonna move on from this. Okay, great. Um, alright, so we're gonna move on from, from that discussion, and we will take that up next week. Time now is two ten. Okay, we're gonna jump into the executive policy manual. I think the best way to do that is to ensure you have the action item. Uh, along with either if you prefer the red-line version or the clean version, it's up to you. But, uh, my intent is to go through each of these sections, line by line, and, uh, explain. What each of these executive policy revisions, um, uh, will, are proposed to, uh, entail, so. Probably, yeah, yeah. I think so. Oh, we do, okay, great, yeah. Um, Lehu, on action item number twenty-five-ten, this is the executive policy manual. Do you have anyone to testify?
Yes, we have one person, we have Jermaine Myers.
Okay, great. Welcome, Jermaine. Aloha, Jermaine, you're recognized for five minutes.
Aloha, honorable trustees. My name is Jermaine Myers, and mahalo for the opportunity to testify on today's action item twenty-five. Dash ten, revisions to OHA's BOT executive policy first reading. According to the packet, under background and discussion, it states. At the request of the BOT chairperson, proposed revisions to the OHA BOT executive policy manual. Were drafted to incorporate changes recommended by the chair. On August thirteen, twenty twenty-five, initial proposed revisions were presented to the administration. For their feedback and input. Revisions were updated to reflect input received and in alignment with the BOT chairperson's objectives. For requesting proposed revisions to the OHA BOT executive policy manual. Let's examine this timeline. August thirteen, initial proposed revisions represented to the administration. Today is August twenty-first, just eight days later. The agenda was filed six days ago, Friday. The agenda packet was made public four days ago, Monday. This means the administration had at best two weekdays to review and provide meaningful input. Were they expected to work through the weekend to meet this rush timeline and satisfy the chair's expectations? A call to oppose the rushed amendments. Trustees, I respectfully urge you to oppose these rushed amendments. The proposed amendments and appendices to the BOT executive policy manual. Failed to address critical governance issues that have repeatedly occurred at this board table. For example, the biennial budget process was exploited by the chair to insert items such as paid FMLA. Which never came before the full board for a committee-level discussion or approval. CIP funding allocations were made to specific organizations and initiatives without proper vetting. Changes affecting Hawaiian-focused charter school programs with call were pushed through outside proper committee procedures. Why are entirely new programs and initiatives such as paid FMLA being added into the budget without first being discussed by the relevant committees? BAE and BF under their respective chairs. The proposed amendments do not address these serious procedural breaches. Creating a toxic and divisive environment. Appendix two, in particular, threatens to foster manipulation, intimidation, and discrimination. Within the organization. This is not the path toward transparency or unity. Kea kua pu, God bless all of you.
Thank you, Jermaine. Lehu, anyone else?
There's no one else signed up.
Okay, great. Alright, trustees, we're gonna start with the action item. Uh, that discusses the background on the executive policy manual. Um, the most current version is the May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five, uh, version. Each amendment is presented, uh, as either a new or an amendment. Um, there are also, uh, areas in our executive policy manual that still refer to outdated. Um, things that no longer exist here, like the Resource Management Committee, uh, and other things, and so that. If you see something, it would be very helpful to point those out, because we can make those changes as well. But the first thing is the First Amendment, it's Amendment A, it's the trustee delegation of signatory authority to the chief executive officer. Um, if you're looking at the red-line document, I'm reading the action item right here, page two of six, but if you read the. Action item, it would be red-line version, I guess it would be page. It's either page ten or it's page two eighty-one. Two eighty-one. Page thirty. In the clean document. Yes, I was reading the action item, but I think what the trustees were referring to is the actual page in the body document. And I think they're referring to the red line, right? So the red line, which is Exhibit C, it starts at page two sixty-six. Page ten, page ten, red line, yep. Oh, you know, one of the reasons why this packet is like eight hundred pages is because. Just our executive policy manual alone is two hundred pages, including all the appendices. And to upload it, you gotta upload the clean version, the red-line version, before you know it, you had six hundred pages already, because it's the same document three times. So, in reality, these changes, there are thirty pages, and that's it to focus on, and I know that's what, uh, our staff have been. Uh, briefed on as well. So page ten of the executive policy manual is the trustee delegation of signatory authority. Uh, and the red-line track changes are, um, what, uh, what is proposed, right? The Board of Trustees may, the word may was inserted, delegate authority to the CEO. Um, the rest of that language is the same up until the COO or CFO period. Uh, it adds further language that the board may, upon a simple majority vote, limit or withdraw. All or part of that delegated authority in its sole discretion. Which the board can do at any time, depending on what that authority actually is. Uh, in all events, the CEO shall use the delegated authority that the board. Uh, delegates to the CEO over A, planning and preparation of proposed budgets. B, implementing the approved budgets with the objective of most efficiently and effectively implementing programs and policies approved by the Board of Trustees. And that the CEO will have no authority to approve agreements or actions that are inconsistent with the Board of Trustees' directions. That's the proposed language for one point three point one. Okay, trustees, any, uh, my plan is just to jump through each of the amendments and read, and read through them and see if any, any discussion. Okay, moving on to the next one then, this is, uh, new. You, you know, the red, the blue was a. Yeah, so i- i- it, it doesn't mean anything, a- and, and, and trustees, when this document, uh, is re-uploaded. Per the next week Thursday's agenda item, that will be fixed. And some of these other things that we've. It's, 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 it's. It's, it's red, it's, it's red is the propos, anything that's red and underlined. Oh, oh, eleven, you're on, okay, eleven, sorry. Yes, yes, yes. Okay, sure. Anything that is blue or red, anything that is underlined is new. And so. This is new as well, right? This is a one point three N, which says. The board chairperson's delegation of chief procurement officer authority, so that, as you guys will know. The, the board chair is also the CPO for OHA by statute. Um, and so this says, pursuant to section one oh three D, which is the state procurement law. HRS, the chairperson of the Board of Trustees serves as the chief procurement officer for the Office of Point Affairs. While the CPO may delegate procurement authority or responsibility to a designee. In accordance with HRS one oh three D two oh eight and Hawaii administrative rules. Any delegation that conveys full procurement authority, as opposed to limited or task-specific authority. Shall require the prior approval of the Board of Trustees. This additional safeguard is intended to uphold the board's fiduciary duties and ensure that such delegations are transparent. Properly documented and aligned with the principles of prudent governance and oversight. All requests for full delegation must clearly describe the scope, justification, duration, and any conditions or limitations that must be submitted for board review. And approval in an open session unless subject to legal confidentiality. And, and I'll, I, I know trustee, uh, Suzo wants to add something, so, my, my thought was. As the, as the CPO, if I was to delegate. Full authority that the law allows the CPO to do. That. This board should know about that, this board should know why. Yours, you're the person that sits at this table that you've elected to be the chair, that is holding that CPO responsibility. Is, is, wants to give away that entire responsibility to the CEO or the administration, that you should know about that. And, uh, and, and, and that board chair should, should justify the reason. And that, that should be a good enough reason that you say, okay. We're good with that. That's a additional safeguard that I thought was important to put in here now. We did, yeah, that was one of the first things you told me, so. Um, currently, right now, there is a, a limited delegation of authority that I do on a monthly basis with, um. Specifically Chris and the procurement team, because without that delegation, they can't even do their jobs. And, and that's been on a month-to-month basis. Um, I will say. While retaining the CPO and HOPA responsibilities, and it's a big responsibility. It has forced me into learning about this organization and its contracts and its delegation powers and the procurement process. And the disbursements and the money, and I don't know if I would have gotten that same level of, of, of. Drinking from the firehose if I didn't self, you know, um. Uh, you know, put it on myself from the beginning, and so that, that's been very beneficial for me. May- maybe at some point, you know, it will get to the point where I'm able to and feel comfortable delegating. Um, some of those responsibilities to the administration, um, but I think so far, at least in my eight months, it's, it's been a good thing. But, uh, whoever sits in this chair, and, uh, you know, this board will elect a new leadership team next November. I think that's important for this board, um, to have oversight over the CPO role, because it is such an important role.
Mr. Chair, um, I just have a couple of edits on page eleven. Transactions involving the acquisition or conveyance of land.
Moving on from the CPO?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, okay, yeah. Anyone have any other comments on that before we move to the next section? Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, uh, line number two. Um, shall be fully reviewed and assessed by the, um, it currently says committee on R, uh, RM committee, but I wanted to say. Committee on Investment and Land Management.
Yeah, so that's a great catch.
Yeah, and then there's one more. Three, four, five, six, on line number six.
It's just page eleven of the track change version, it's the transactions involving the acquisition or conveyance of land.
And then, uh, I believe it's line number six as well, it starts on six. And same thing, um, Resource Management Committee to Ireland.
Yeah.
And then on the bottom, the last line, it says including the land acquisition and management policy. Or like it to say, the Hawaii real estate strategic plan.
Okay, great. That's a fantastic recommendation, and that's what we need from all of you. Look at your relevant subject matter committees and, and point out things, we'll flow them up to Summer and the board chair's office. So we can make these changes, because we're gonna post an agenda tomorrow. Which is, uh, Friday, and that material packet will need to be uploaded by Monday, ideally by eight AM. So these changes that we see and identify are gonna have to be worked on by the staff over the weekend. So that we can meet the state sunshine law requirement of Monday by eight, self-imposed, no later than ten thirty AM, which is the OIP. Guidance. Okay. Any que, uh, I mean, that sounds straightforward to me. Okay, great, okay, we're moving on to, uh, C. Trustee Staff Interaction Policy. This is gonna be on page twelve. Let me provide some context on this, so. um, you know, I believe there's like five different memos, or at least four, that originate from, I believe twenty twelve, under Clyde Namu's um, tenure as the CEO, that started to um, outline a communication policy between the board suite and the administration. And that memo has taken on various different forms over the last few years. I think Sylvia amended it, I know, I believe Kapu Hana amended it when she came on board. Um, my goal as your chair is to take these memos that are all over the place, and put them in one document, the executive policy manual. So like, first and foremost, memos here, delegation of authority memo here, comms memo here, let's codify it, let's have the board talk about it, and let's incorporate it into the EPM. Um, otherwise, you just have memos that are, that are flying out all over the place. So this addresses that. And, and I know this is something that Kapu Hana will, will probably wanna weigh in on, um, which is the trustee administration and staff interaction policy. And I'm just gonna read it to read what it uh, what it, the proposed language says. So to promote coordination, accountability, and effective governance, all trustees are encouraged to work, excuse me, encouraged to route work requests, including written materials or meetings with administration personnel that require staff time or deliverables through the administrator or board chairperson whenever practicable. This practice supports transparency, alignment across offices, and responsible management of agency resources. Recognizing the unique responsibilities of elected officials, trustees may, when necessary, contact administration staff directly with a copy to the administrator and board chairperson or chief of staff for minor routine or time-sensitive matters that do not require significant staff time, policy interpretation, or operational decision-making. Trustees who choose to exercise this discretion do so with the understanding that they are individually accountable for the professionalism, the scope, and appropriateness of such interactions. Administration staff shall elevate or refer trustee inquiries to the administrator or appropriate supervisor. This discretion applies solely to elected trustees and does not extend to trustee aides or secretaries. Trustee staff must continue to coordinate through their respective trustee or chief of staff, who shall then contact the administrator. Nothing in this section alters the statutory authority of the administrator with respect to agency operations or personnel, nor does it supersede any relevant provisions of the Board of Trustee Executive Policy Manual, including Article Three, Section Three, which is the administration section. And this policy would supersede all prior memoranda and policies regarding administration staff interaction. So the idea is to codify as best as we can and as realistic as we can a communications policy between the admin and the board suite. We could have a pie in the sky policy that is never followed and is never incorporated because it's just, it is too difficult to execute. What's proposed here, I think, is a a meaningful like half, halfway of something that is, that is realistically possible. And um, I, I, I'm, I'm sure we'll have differences of opinion between the admin and, and the board on how that communication policy would work. But at the end of the day, I really feel that you and each of you are elected trustees, and that if you want information, and through your discretion, you feel it's something that you need in a timely, immediate manner, then that is your right as an elected official to go get that information. We're not a different trustee up on the hill, we are elected trustees. And I believe that each of you deserves that opportunity to do that with your discretion. We should, to the maximum extent possible, route things to the administrator and her team to the board chair's office to be your um, connective tissue to the administration. But if at any time you require something, I believe you can make that decision and use it wisely to go get it. That doesn't extend to your staff, that is something that you, you preserve. Um, so that is how this is written. Trustee Kaka.
Um. I do appreciate the opportunity for us to um, handle time-sensitive manner, um, subject matter. Um, and at the same time, i- it is um, interesting where it, it indicates that the trustees have to uh, CC, um, whether it's the administrator or, and the board chairperson or the chief of staff. Um, however, our trustee aides or secretaries don't need to do so. And I say that because um, one could read that and think, oh, um, so the, the trustee aides and secretaries have more ability and flexibility th- than their own trustee does.
Can you tell me what you're reading?
Am I, am I not reading it?
It's opposite. Yeah, um, it, it's not extended to the staff.
Oh.
Only the trustee.
So it's, okay.
Yup.
I wanna make sure I'm reading this correct then.
Yeah.
So this, the red line version is then saying trustee staff must continue to coordinate through their respective trustee chief of staff
Yup.
who shall then contact.
Yup.
The admin. So can, can you um, explain that more to me so I can understand? So it's saying then that the trustee aide or trustee staff person?
Let's use an example.
Yeah.
You have something, you have a question for the administration.
Mm-hmm.
But it doesn't rise to the level of like immediacy and I need to know right now. So you ask Mark to find out that answer.
Yeah.
He has to go to Stacy? Or the chief of, or? Or the chief of staff, right?
Um.
Through the trustee staff, coordinate through their respective trustee or the chief of staff.
Yeah.
Who will then contact the administrator.
Okay, so, so what, what is um, what would be the protocol then, then? If it's so time-sensitive and pretty critical, and we can't get a hold of this person and then this person, this, like, what would be the, the?
For you?
Yeah, so for instance, I'm thinking of, like, if there's hearings, whether it's um, at the legislature, county councils, and uh, there's different decisions being made, and we're trying to seek um, clarity on whatever is happening. So if we can't get a hold of this person, this per- then how, how does that work? Does that happen sometimes, you know, for whatever reason?
I mean, at the end of the day, the, the administrator is your, is, is, is the top person. And, and you go to the administrator, and administrator will find that answer for you as quick as possible.
Yeah.
You know? Yeah. I mean, if people are on planes and they can't answer their phone, like. Do you have some trustee?
Uh, so, um, but in the beginning, you want the con- that contact to be made by trustee to, of course, um, CEO instead of the aides, but after that contact, can we, like, dedicate a point of contact?
Oh, sure.
Okay, no, that's, that's all I wanted to say.
Yeah, I mean, it, it gives you the, i- i- it gives you the opportunity to use your discretion. I think it is a good practice to, to go through the CEO at, at, as much as possible. But it doesn't, that, that there, we will not codify a policy, and previous memorandums did. It said you will not go to any member of the staff without going to the CEO's office. And I just don't think that is realistic, it is not happening right now. And even if we were to include it, I don't, I don't know if, it's, it's, it's something that is practical.
I, I have a recent example too, in terms of uh,
Yeah.
why I'm asking for clarification on this as well. Um, so for instance, just recently, there was a Hawaii county council uh, that committee meeting regarding uh, Pohakalua and that resolution there, so um, let's say, not able to get a hold of you Stacy, right, till the end of the day. And then I found out that morning that they had the, the hearing that was scheduled, which I didn't know till that time, was scheduled for eleven, eleven AM, I believe. So then, if I'm not able to get a hold of Stacy, then my next thought is, okay, I try to get a hold of Lina Ala to then get a clarity in terms of where we are, if there's gonna be testimony provided, what is the stance, what is the progress thus far? Um, those are the kind of questions I have to see, see where we're going and what to expect for the hearing and how was represented there. So for me, those are like, that's a prime example of trying to be resourceful and being, if I can't get a hold of this person, then this is the next person that would be handling this matter. And if I just wait till I get a call back, well then, that might result in whatever time.
I mean, are you like suggesting there's some like communication matrix? Like if you can't get a hold of the CEO, then you go to this person, depending on what this issue is?
I'm, I'm asking too, because uh, just recently too, it was asked to have, what is it called, the succession, line of succession?
Yeah.
And it happens more than probably would, we would prefer in terms of things gotta be done, because we just found out.
That's one answer, Stacy.
Mahalo, and um, so I think this is a little bit of an an anomaly, because I, I was in a, in a meeting. I, I think what's important is, um, because I try to get back to trustees within, you know, pretty quickly, if not immediately. Um, i- it's also important, like, because I know you did put out a call, but like a text messaging, this is important, call me now. So, because if I don't have context, then I'm thinking that, you know, if it's just a missed number, a missed call that it, you know, I, it's hard to tell the urgency by just a missed call. Um, so I think that's, that's something that we can also um, have an understanding and agreement on in terms of um, your expectation of me to call you back. If, if I'm prompted, like, this is an emergency, you know, to have that um, is important. Um, because I do try to get back pretty immediate, i- if, if at all possible. But I do wanna say, I, I appreciate um, Chair adding in the language about just CCing me, just because that way, um, because sometimes to, to the point, sometimes we have um, requests made to a staff member, and their supervisor's not aware, so it's difficult to be able to manage their workloads or prioritize. Um, or they may be saying yes to something that is actually somebody else's kuliana. Um, so I, I appreciate that courtesy, yeah.
Business plan, work plan, biennial budget. Just for the.
So we don't have business plans. Um, there are different, within the PIA, they have their own um, way of divvying up the work and ass- assigning how the work should be executed. So there's no um, no template that every PIA uses to um, articulate their work plan. My hope is that, that, that enterprise reporting document that we shared out yesterday, um, because that will give a very comprehensive look at all of the various projects, initiatives, tactics, um, in addition to um, the biennial budget spend down, would be um, articulated in that particular document. Again, but that's not to say that, that wouldn't, you know, also be accompanied with other reports that are required or um, requested by the, by the board.
Do we do? When it says administration shall prepare separate business plans?
No.
And work plans?
No.
This is something from the past.
It is, it's, it's, yes, and it's not practical. I'm sorry.
What would we change it to?
So.
What you guys presented yesterday was fantastic, by the way.
Mahalo, mahalo, I, I think that is more practical. And um, and again, the work plans are, are really based off of each individual PIA's initiatives, projects, and tactics. And so those, they know their work best and how best to um, articulate that in terms of how they execute.
Okay.
I, I, I would ask that the work plans be articulated through that um, program progress report.
Let's do this, if you don't, if, if you're okay with it. Everett can propose new language for section three one D that may even include changing this administrative work plan title and then the content in there. And gets, we can send that to uh, Summer and the team to incorporate, so that when we post.
Thank you.
For next Thursday, this is reflective of that.
Mahalo.
I think we should take out subject to G O T approval, and the reason for that is we're not expert.
We're not, we don't have the expertise as our staff has. And how, who are we to critique work plans? We don't even know our work plan. So I would suggest we take that out. The work plans come to us once a year, we can review it, and if we don't like something, we can tell the administration, we don't like it. It's just gonna eliminate one thing from our agenda.
And, and Chair, I think the, the, the guardrail on, on this um, particular um, what's being asked here is that AIs will come before the board anyway, right? So even though we have the budget, I've been, that's been approved, the programs still come before you through the AIs. So you will have eyes on, on, at a high level, what that, that work approach is gonna be to execute on any particular program or service. But we can change, we can add that language.
I, I was going to say, Chair, that uh, it's a very good idea to do what you're recommending here, and that is to clarify where the lines of approval fall. And so I, I just wanted to suggest that when Everett does produce the language here, like, he makes it very clear what the board needs to approve in advance and what the um, administration from that point on has leeway to run with.
Okay.
But it's a, I mean, it's good to make that clarification.
We'll punt that to uh, the admin, come up with the proposed language, and then based on what their proposed language is, we can um, weigh in and see if we want a board approval or not board approval. I'm not really wedded to any, any particular one, well, I guess we'll see what the language looks like.
I'd be interested to know the um, mana'olif background can be provided by our longest-serving trustee in terms of the familiarity of this part. Because do, do you think that? Would like why it applied in the past versus now?
No, I don't know anything about the business or work plans.
Okay.
That's a real administrative.
Yeah, right.
Level thing.
Do you know why it was even included? Or this is like that updated, even before your time?
No, we, we never, we, we never got involved with those things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay, great, moving on from that then. Yeah, thank you so much, trustee. Okay, next page is uh, page thirty-nine. Uh, so this is uh, this whole page and section refers to the biennial budget. Um, there's a couple proposed amendments uh, and for, for the board to consider, and I'll just, I'll just read them. So the following responsibilities are assigned to the preparation of the biennial budget. In consultation with the Board of Trustees, the administration shall evaluate, formulate, and recommend for consideration by the Board of Trustees a proposed biennial budget and multi-year financial plan that is aligned with and designed to implement the policies, programs, and plans approved or directed by the Board of Trustees. The Board of Trustees reserves the authority to amend, reject, or substitute proposals, and the administration shall support and implement the final decisions adopted by the Board of Trustees. Uh, number two, the Board of Trustees shall consider, amend, or reject the proposed biennial budget and multi-year financial plan recommended by the administration, and may introduce and adopt its own budgetary or financial proposals as it deems necessary. Two, approve new programs within OAS program structure and appropriate funds to implement programs it determines are in the best interest of the organization, whether proposed by the administration or initiated by the Board of Trustees. And three, direct the administration to implement any Board of Trustee approved budget, program, or policy decision in accordance with the Board of Trustees intent and established timelines. And then four, review the implementation of the biennial budget and evaluate the program management, execution, and performance. To ensure alignment with the Board of Trustees directives and organizational goals. In summary, I believe this language really just codifies what we already do anyway. Um as a board and the statutory powers we have uh to uh uh pass uh a board budget. Um so this is um some amended language that just codifies, I think, what really already exists, uh maybe in statute. Maybe it was a little loose in practice, maybe it was unclear. Um within the organization, but it 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 makes it pretty explicit. Your thoughts on this, trustee?
Future, in future budgets, that maybe we have a workshop. So that everybody's mana'au can be put into this budget before um administration even get started on working on it. Cause I noticed you changed someplace else that we should get the budget within thirty days of our deadline instead of seventy days. Some, I I saw, you know what I mean? So I I think that it would, it would work so much better if the boards uh minds and administration get put together. And that kind of one big budget get created and then we don't have to go through what we went through this year. You know?
Sorry, Mr. Chair. Um I actually gotta go back to page twenty two, if you don't mind. And I'll propose the the language before next week's meeting, uh page twenty two. Sorry about that, I missed one. Of the red line, uh sorry there. The guiding principles of series two thousand beneficiary support and services.
Yeah. You mind if we finish this?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Yep.
The uh trustee said.
We're back at uh.
Yeah, we're still on the same one.
Three point four. And um in keeping with what we decided with regard to administrative work plans three point one point D. In light of Everett redoing the language there, I wanna suggest that the language of this section, three point four point C, be consistent. Uh be be made to be consistent with what Everett uses in the previous section. And specifically note the demarcation line between what the board approves. And what it delegates to administration.
You have a uh proposed, you have a s- section to focus on that that uh.
Um i- in particular, it would be paragraph one and paragraph two. Roman numeral one.
And I think. The section prior to this is somewhat related, but uh is different than. Three point four point C, which is focused on the budget itself rather than. What the admin is gonna propose, which is mirrors uh your program to intend to roll out. In the near future. Is there any specific?
The concern I have is is timing. The ma- majority of board input should be at a a set time when the budget is presented by administration. And board approves, amends, or um uh or rejects it.
Before final approval.
But um we don't wanna establish a process so that that six months later or at uh an inappropriate, inappropriate time. We have a lot of, we're putting in a lot of input from the board. But we we wanna guarantee that the board retains its overall authority. And that uh the process is smooth. And part of the reason it's hard for me to articulate this is we're we're not using the same language as in the original, in terms of work plans or um. You suggested business plan. The the terms that are here are proposals. Financial proposals. Budget or budgetary's proposals. I I wanna make sure those words line up with the grid that administration has given us for being able to track everything. And they're made at the appropriate time.
It uh just one change, but let trustee uh said the next page does have the change from seven talented days to thirty times. Biennial budget shall be submitted to the Board of Trustees on a thirty calendar date for formal consideration. Challenge and follow. Not sure other trustees uh been here longer, oh, why even seven was there, but I would imagine it's.
That's not.
As you run up to the June thirtieth deadline, the pressure builds dramatically. Bringing a budget to the board seven days before formal consideration. Like that may not even be enough.
Not realistic.
Assuming this would be the administration's budget in its final form.
In thirty days.
Thirty days prior.
Yeah.
As uh it would be as a informational presentation, right? If the board isn't taking action on that, it is being presented, not to seek out the budget.
Most good process of um accepting, editing, amending said budget. Led by the Budget and Finance Committee Chair. Who's purview the budget is.
That sounds good, and and I would echo um trustee Hulu's suggestion that we have some form of workshop. So that the board can input at an early time its preferences.
You know, in previous iterations of policy manuals that no longer are are are, they're outdated. And in some cases, they're twenty years old. I think the operations manual was the document. It actually outlined an entire flow chart of how the budget would be created. Um from, you know, six months prior. These different steps to the process, and I would welcome something like that. I mean, really, that's the BNF chairs Kuliana to propose to the board. And we can amend as necessary, but I think having that would avoid things that like happened this past year. And would um be able to incorporate some of the suggestions you have. I don't necessarily think that would live here. It could definitely live in an appendix that we could add. Um I'd be, I'd be all for that. You know, budget, budget development should should probably start, I don't know, I mean. We started in January this past year, six months prior, February, January, February timeframe. Maybe it starts earlier, I don't know.
Maybe that seven days was just something that they, that was the absolutely.
Latest.
Latest, but I I'm sure we can start at any time, it depends on, of course.
Well, you start, you know, I went back and looked, when did the previous budget get passed? In twenty twenty three. June twenty eight, twenty twenty three, you were the chair. Like two days before the end of the fiscal year is when it passed. So even to the previous budget you guys did was right up to the end, you know? And I think uh I remember Chair one day looking on the calendar and being like, how come you scheduled it this late? Like that's dangerous to put it that late. Don't hundred percent agree. So having a flow chart would would be very, very helpful. And I think it would provide some really good input to the administration that could be able to time their briefings and public informational briefings. And should we do the PIA briefings again, take it out to community, like a really good flow chart? So I don't know. We can incorporate that, we should incorporate that. And and there are templates that that really no longer apply, but there's probably some useful information we could pull from that, so it wouldn't be too hard.
Yeah.
But Cheryl Appa should be, you know, really leading the effort on that or or working in concert with us on that.
I imagine uh CEO could work backward from the enterprise. Grid that she presented to us the other day and identify those points that would be appropriate for collecting board feedback in advance.
Yeah, yeah, great.
Mahalo Chair, uh so CFO does provide a timeline that would definitely um inform. Um but again, that that's current state, and so we would probably wanna bring that timeline and get input um through the Budget and Finance Committee. To see how we can um make it more responsive to how the board wants to move going forward. So we can, we can do that in short order.
Fifty thousand dollars, which are triggered by events or circumstances beyond the administration's reasonable control. Such as anticipated increases in the cost of outside goods or services. Minor budget adjustments can be made without prior Board of Trustee approval. When needed to be more effectively implemented, effectively implement Board of Trustee prescribed policies and programs. The administration has delegated the authority to recommend major budget adjustments, that is, those which are more than fifty thousand dollars. And less than two hundred fifty thousand dollars and deemed by the CEO to be necessary desirable to more effectively implement. The Board of Trustees approved policies and programs. All major budget adjustments require approval of the Board of Trustees. No budget adjustments increasing or reducing grant and sponsorship appropriations may be made without approval of the Board of Trustees. So the big thing here is it it um reduces the minor budget adjustment. Threshold for the administration, which was a hundred thousand dollars or five percent between each program to fifty thousand dollars. Um it gives the administration the opportunity with board approval to move money between fifty thousand dollars and two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That the CEO deems necessary or desirable, so it it lowers the threshold and it removes the five percent. Between programs. And and I think the reason why this is here is just to provide more fiscal oversight from the Board of Trustees regarding um. Significant amount of beneficiary and trust resources. Yeah. Any thoughts uh trustees on this? Oh. Oh, I'm sorry, okay, um. Okay, yeah, we'll go right back to that one, and then this section would. Oh, yeah, yeah.
I wanted to get a clarification and then um I know Everett had some feedback as well regarding this. So the question here is, is it fifty thousand um across the enterprise, so it's a um aggregate? Um or is it uh fifty thousand per PIA?
I guess would, I mean, what the trustees thoughts on that, whether it's an aggregate or between PIA?
And and if if Everett can um help inform too, that would be.
Uh, thank you, uh Kapona, and thank you, Chair. Um so I think this is just to clarify that it's looking to just reduce the dollar threshold. Rather than putting in a, I guess, additional kind of uh controls in in how we've been operating.
Yeah.
So it's it's just really reducing that dollar threshold as opposed to changing kind of uh, I guess, the other budget.
Uh, yes, correct.
Thank you.
Trustee Kino. Oh, yeah, without her other question, the aggregate.
So Everett currently one hundred thousand dollars.
Currently is the one hundred thousand dollar threshold or organization wide or per PIA?
Uh, it is between, uh to my, so um. To my understanding, it's between PIA. So when you're moving expenditures across categories and across um, right from, let's say, community engagement to advocacy. Uh, you're capped at that one hundred thousand dollars or the ten percent of the, I'm sorry, five percent of the. The overall budget, and then that's the limit as to how much you can move between um divisions without going back for board approval through a realignment. So it's just seeking clarification that there's not a change to that and that we're not. Implementing some kind of agency wide fifteen thousand or, you know, fifty thousand dollar threshold. Okay, thank you.
But Chair, just one question for Steve. I would assume you prefer it to be per PIA instead of an aggregate. What would you think?
So we would keep it as is.
Alright.
We would keep it in with the current practice.
Okay, thank you.
Mahalo.
The Board of Trustees approved policies and programs, so it just codifies a quarterly report of major or minor budget adjustments. And how that adjustment advanced the Board of Trustees policies and programs. Okay, trustee Susan?
Um, yeah, it's not gonna require anyone turning back to page twenty two, but it just, I just wanted to point out that um. I guess cannot be expecting when we have that first reading, um uh Chair, I'm gonna bring you some proposed changes on the housing section, I believe it needs some changes.
Okay.
Um, it's basically just updating, not changing anything, but just to up uh align with our strategic plan, implementation plan, and management plan for Hawaii real estate. And for the future, I do anticipate that possibly changing as well in the policy, only because we do have a memo, a working group. Um and I I feel that it should align with that as well, uh the housing section of the memo. Money maliola, so just to be.
Outline the ones you have or?
Yeah, but you know what, I I would prefer, um I I wanna reach out to Paul as well, consult with him, other verbiage, and then getting the exact dates. I I just found this one in here, so.
Okay, so this would be in series two thousand?
Yeah, series two thousand beneficiary support and services on page twenty two. Um and also having a conversation about the guiding principles, is that still in place?
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Okay.
I'm gonna need some time to, but I'll get you that, so we can insert that for board uh consideration.
Okay.
Mahalo.
All right, we'll move to the next one, which is, yep, page seventy five, seventy four. You got another one? You got another one?
On sixty two.
Okay, go ahead.
Sorry, Chair, I'm married on.
Hope we're tracking these.
Yeah.
Any changes? Okay, yeah, you can replay the video, okay.
Yeah, and and we'll, we'll, we'll send them over as well.
Sixty two.
Page sixty two, uh so uh land acquisition and management, thirty ninety. Um again, referring to the land acquisition and management policy, uh we wanna change that to Hawaii real estate strategic plan. Um and this section here, I also wanna work on proposing a new uh paragraph here uh with referencing the strategic plan. Implementation plan as well as the management plan moving forward, so I'll I'll propose that that edits to you and then.
Okay.
We can get on the next one.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, three eleven K, this is a um. A new addition to the series three thousand administration legal section. Uh page in in. Page in in the track change, it's, I have seventy-four, you have seventy-four? Seventy-four, okay. So this is a completely new section added. We briefly had the discussion and exec session about OHA internal investigations. I'll read it. It's just rather long, but it's okay, we'll get into the record, so the proposed language is that the Corporation Council. Shall provide the Board of Trustees with an executive summary and any recommendations upon the conclusion. Of any formal internal or external investigation initiated by OHA. Or otherwise prompted by actions taken by OHA, regardless of whether such investigation was authorized by the board and whether conducted by internal staff. Outside council or independent third-party investigators. These materials shall be presented in executive session pursuant to HRS ninety-two dash five. Or other applicable law and shall include a brief description of the matter investigated. The general scope of the investigation, material findings, executive summaries or conclusions. Any recommendations for coercive remedial or preventative action and the status of any ongoing compliance or implementation efforts. And so within three, if if a investigation of such nature was initiated. Upon final completion of that investigation, within three calendar days of the receipt of the final investigative executive summary report and recommendations by General Counsel. Board Council or an administrative staff designee, the Board of Trustees Chairperson shall be informed in writing. Following receipt of that notification, the chairperson shall place on the next Board of Trustees agenda on their executive session. A briefing by the administration and a review of the final investigative executive summary report and recommendations by the Board of Trustees. Then it goes on to talk about full reports may be withheld if they contain certain PII and attorney-client privilege restrictions. It also though says the Board of Trustees holds the attorney-client privilege on behalf of OHA. And so we retain that authority to require full access to investigative materials, provided appropriate confidentiality safeguards observed. This access is essential to the Board's fiduciary oversight and governance responsibilities. And must not be constrained in matters involving legal, ethical or trustee-related concerns. This policy does not alter the administration's authority to manage personnel or operational matters, but affirms the Board's responsibility. To receive appropriate disclosures related to OHA's governance, internal controls and legal compliance. So I think it's pretty self-explanatory, you know, it codifies that once an investigation is completed. That the Board Chair is notified within seventy-two hours and that at the next available meeting in exec session. That investigative exec summary recommendations are presented to the trustees for your review. Questions on that? Okay. Moving on to. The page three fifty-two. This is, I think, item D is consistent with what we did earlier in section one thousand, so the. Delegation of authority under scope and delegation of authority, it just says that. The the proposed language changes, the administrator will use his or her delegated authority, if any. Only for the purpose of more effectively enabling the implementation of the Board of Trustees approved budget policies and programs. This is page eighty-one. Page eighty-one now, it is. Okay, okay, page eighty-two. What is that, is that a figure two, is that what we added? Alina? That doesn't form anything, okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Yes, okay, so eighty-three. This is a a very extensive document, it's it's. It's gonna require us to go through it in in pretty good detail. So this is a new appendix added to the EPM. And it retitles the appendices and I felt it was best to come after. Appendix one, which. Is is whatever the title is for appendix one, I thought appendix two, that was the best place to place this. So what this is, is the Operational Delegation of Authority. Document and as as many of you are well aware. The current delegation memo is is this document, we've, I've been talking about it for several months now. It was originally done, at least this version, was done by Kamal Pono Crab in July of twenty eighteen. It was amended, the dispersments section was amended in. Twenty twenty-three by Colin Kippen and it is the current, it is the current policy we have now. So one thing is, how do we take a memo like the other memos and get it in our EPM? And then how do we update this so that it is reflective of the OHA today? That is different than the OHA in twenty eighteen and twenty twenty-three. And add a few extra things on there that I think are also important as well. Oh. What's that? Yeah, so this, this gets rid of this, yeah, this supersedes this. We did use this as a general template, but this supersedes this, yeah. And I'm open to whatever feedback you have, but I will read, let me just structure this for you, so. The Operational Delegation of Authority is pursuant to the OHA Board of Trustees EPM, which which may be amended as of September four twenty twenty-five. The OHA Board delegates certain signatory authorities to designate as identified below. Effective, you know, upon adoption, this delegation of operational authority, it supersedes all previous versions, including this one. The old one, the current one. And this operational delegation authority should be used to effectively and compliantly implement key processes and functions, complete required documentation. And ensure all actions are executed in accordance with established policies and procedures of OHA. So the way the delegation is structured is. And and there's some numbers like three and four on here should be one and two, those little things will be fixed when we update the the updated version, but. It is structured in certain chunks. Chunks, chunk number one is our Ho'akua Lahui event sponsorship approvals. Which, prior to that, the old memo. Was grants, including sponsorships and approvals, so like this doesn't even apply. Today, Ho'akua didn't exist back then. So this clearly shows the Ho'akua Lahui event sponsorship approvals. We then have the next section, which would be section two, which is budget approvals. Section three would be purchase requests, section four is contract executions. Section five is dispersments, section six is travel approvals. Section seven is vacation requests and then finally, section eight is kind of a catch-all. Which is language straight out of the procurement authority statute that says. You know, everyone will follow the procurement rules and 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 conduct necessary training and whatnot. So if we come back to the beginning, that's how this document is is updated. And and just to walk you through like left to right. We have a Ho'akua sponsorship, it is initiated, well, ultimately, it's initiated by the applicant. It is in receipt of by the staff who then initiates the process. That initiation goes to a director, if you remember, we had a conversation about directors being. That like scoring threshold, that we really thought the director level should be, was it director or consultant level? Yeah, yeah, so we have, the director is the first. Pass, the COO is the second pass. The BNF Chair initiates that approval that they receive. From the administration in the form of an action item and a full application and a scoring sheet and the recommended sponsorship amount. If it is adopted in the BNF Committee, then the Chair agendases it for final approval. And the Board of Trustees has final approval over all Ho'akua sponsorships. Think that's pretty basic, it's what we're doing right now. Questions on that? Okay. Let's jump to the next section, budget approvals. This is important, right, because there's a lot of who's doing what here and and whatnot. So the first line is fiscal year biennial budget proposals to the Board of Trustees in accordance with Board of Trustees approved plans and programs. And so this is essentially the proposal coming out of the administration that will be initiated with the budget chief. The second pass is the CFO, the third pass is the COO, the fourth pass is the CEO. Then at some point in that flow chart that we will create, it gets presented to the Board of Trustees in. And and informational briefing, then the BNF Chair initiates that budget for Board of Trustees approval. If it passes the BNF Committee, then the Board Chair agendases it for final approval. That's that's kind of the flow chart in a one-liner there. Now, the next line is the actual approval of the budget, the final on that is the Board of Trustees and no other. It doesn't go through any other gate, right, when it comes out of the BNF Chair's committee and it gets put on the agenda. At the end of the day, the Board of Trustees is the final authority on the budget. The next one is request for modification to the spending policy or for multi-year carryover budget provisions. That is initiated at the CFO level, COO, second is the first pass, second pass is the CEO. And the final is the board. If you're looking at a significant budget realignment. Or a comprehensive reforecasting of the budget, that is, that is like. That that goes through the whole wickets again, right, budget chief, CFO, COO, CEO, BF Chair, BOT Chair, full board. The next line is kind of what we just talked about, the fifty thousand dollar threshold between programs. If the administration wants to do a necessary budget adjustment of fifty thousand dollars or less. In accordance with Board of Trustees approved plans, programs and provisos, the budget chief initiates, the CFO signs off, the COO is the third. And the CEO is final. For CEO level. COO, CFO, senior directors and below. For necessary budget adjustments above fifty thousand dollars. That comes all the way to the Board of Trustees for approval. And then finally, budget adjustments in the grants category. We got a lot of money sitting in the grants category in multiple Payas. Any budget adjustment requests in the grants category, that also requires final Board of Trustees approval. And then the language at the bottom says budget adjustments are tracked on a cumulative basis. OHA's budget chief tracks all requests for compliance. All budget adjustments in and out of the grants budget must be approved by the Board of Trustees. And shall be presented to the BNF Committee and the Board of Trustees in an action item format. And but this matrix does not preclude the waiver of any matter by committee to the Board of Trustees. Per Article eight, section M of the bylaws, so our bylaws allow. A super majority of the board to waive the subject matter committee and come straight to the Board of Trustees, we did that on June thirtieth. So this matrix doesn't preclude the waiver of the subject matter committee as long as you have six votes on the Board of Trustees. Does that all make sense? Okay, go to the next one, purchase requests. Twenty-five hundred dollars up to twenty-four nine ninety-nine, the director is final on that. So any director of a of a Paya can authorize program purchases up to that threshold. If it goes above twenty-five to forty, to just under fifty, that can be final at the CFO level. And anything from fifty to two fifty. Is the Board Chair can authorize fifty to two fifty. But if it's above two fifty, the full board must approve that purchase request. And. Anything that's above twenty-five hundred or more requires budget chief verification of funds available. Required on all purchase requests of twenty-five hundred or more. Any questions on the purchase requests? Okay, moving to contract executions. Program level contracts and amendments, less than fifty thousand dollars. That final is the CEO. Content approval is the program initiates it, you have the director. Corp counsel for form only with the COO and then the execution is the CEO. Above fifty thousand dollars, a director can initiate, corp counsel first, CEO second, board chair final. Any corp counsel contracts and amendments. Corp counsel initiates, CEO is the first, board chair final. All grant agreements, less than fifty thousand dollars, the CEO is the final. All grant agreements above fifty thousand dollars, the board chair is the final. All other agreements, fifty thousand or less, the CEO is the final. And all other other agreements above fifty thousand dollars, the board chair is the final. But it removes the program and the COO from that authorization. And the note is that all contracts and amendments are subject to procurement code and are guidelines. All contracts and amendments must must be in furtherance of Board of Trustees approved plans and programs. And finally, all contracts and amendments require signatures from the vendor. A director, corp counsel, COO, CEO and the board chair, who is ultimately the CPO and the HOPA. Questions on contracts?
No, but I got, sorry, I wanted to go back to purchase requests real quick. Steve, is this an aggregate or is it per Paya, the program of purchase requests?
This would be per contract or per for each. We we also have a question on this one too.
Oh, okay.
Purchase request? Yeah, 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 please.
Thank you, Chair, I think in reviewing this, you know, I. The question that came up was the board approval for a program purchases in excess of two hundred fifty thousand dollars. In terms of the actual purchase, I think. We're looking for guidance as to how the board would like to proceed with that type of approval. Where if it is a purchase, it's something that's either. Maybe in negotiations or something that's still not a finalized matter, so. I guess just that.
Give us an example.
I'm not sure if, I mean, I can. I guess just given the nature of the Board's interactions, right, and the need to present things, you know, with. Unless in certain, with certain exceptions in open session, just. Things moving toward the purchase often are, you know, still not a finalized. Decision that's. Public. It it it's sometimes, it it might conflict with how the board needs to operate in sunshine law. And having to make a decision, I I need to look at maybe what we've utilized something, I mean, what we've made up. Utilize this authority for it as it currently exists under the procurement code. Or I'm sorry, not the procurement code, but just kind of within our. Yeah, operations purchases.
That sounds like a really like nuanced scenario, I think this situation was if. If we're gonna buy something that's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars or more.
It could, so in in that case, it, I mean, it could be sub, I mean, it would normally. It would likely fall under a procurement, it require procurement, it's possible that it doesn't. And maybe it's something that the board, I mean, but the board would have already had the, you know, budget for it as well. I guess I'm trying to predict this, what, you know, impact of a change like this is. And I'm just trying to weigh that against how the board has to do its business, again, in in public session with materials shared that might not be.
You wanna think about it more and we're open to suggestion.
Yeah, and then, thank you, as Kapono pointed out, sometimes, right, having to get something before the board also requires that advanced planning. It might not be able to kind of meet a purchase timeline. That we might be able to meet if we're able to do it administratively, again, subject to whatever budget approvals have been made by the board. We'll come back to it, though, thank you.
Okay.
And then, sorry, if I could maybe just follow up on another thing regarding the contract execution section. For a grant. Um, for uh grant agreements. Uh, those are currently under a. Uh, signature authority uh by the COO, uh, and the ones above fifty thousand are looking to be. Uh, signed off by the Board Chair.
Yep.
Um. I guess. That doesn't technically fall within the CPO authority of the Board Chair. Um, because it's a grant, um, and it normally would be, uh, you know, something subject to a board approval previously. So the board would have to approve grants, right? We we don't have that grant authority. Uh, for decision-making uh for um administration. So it would seem that the board has already made an approval of a grantee. And this type of grant agreement, uh, just execution of the actual agreement or contract. Uh, is something that's just operationalizing a board decision. So in that sense, I would think that it's maybe should also either stay with. Uh, the COO or CEO, um, but subject to the board's consideration.
Okay, this would be the grant agreements above fifty.
Yes.
Got it. Okay, I will take a look at that for sure. What you're saying is, I mean, it it wouldn't even matter if you changed this to Board of Trustees as the final. Because this is assuming the board has already approved it.
Yes.
And we're just executing it.
Yeah, so the board has to make a decision on all grant approvals in order to exercise authority under ten seventeen. So the board has effectively already. Approved a specific grantee. This is just the contract to affect that approval, right? To document all of the terms of the grant contract.
And and, well, and this is a good and interesting thing to point out, right? Because, like you said. The the CPO procurement doesn't apply. But what this does. Is it gives the board some type of check and oversight on the contract language. That's going to be executed. Scope. Deliverables, timelines.
Yes, although I would say that, you know, that is something, one, that the board has already looked at and approved by virtue of the action item, right? To approve it um through their normal board processes, uh, and that's really on administration, um, corp counsel, right, to confirm. And the community engagement staff to confirm all of those contents are reflective of the board's approval, right? That is as, you know, as presented in the action item, um, the form, right? It follows that information and that, you know, we're just, again, uh, signing off on what the board has already approved.
I think that my thought here on this, and and I'm open to it with the, depending on how the trustees feel, is it gives the Board Chair. Who who in their CPO hat scopes, contracts, and and should they retain that authority? Um, an opportunity to put a final lens on what a grant contract. Would be so that what the board adopted in an action item, which is not necessarily. Down into the level of detail that a contract would be. That final check.
Yeah.
That 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 was the thought around one that exceeded a fifty thousand dollar threshold.
Well, what I wanted to say is that when we approve grants, sometimes the terms of the contract is not in. The grant approval uh process in our approval.
Right.
So, and a good example is um. The. I I think I brought it to your. Yes, yes. So the emergency funds, um, we don't know how they're giving it out. Uh, Hawaii Community Assets. And and you know, that's kind of something I've always watched, looked after because it's open money. So um, I got a complaint from uh a beneficiary. That she got a letter and she sent me a copy of the letter, which I sent to administration. Um, denying her request for emergency funds, that they ran out of money. And I said, eh, you guys just gave out the contract. How can they run out of five hundred thousand dollars in in couple months? You know, so uh Stacy followed up on it and um, in fact, they didn't run out of money, yeah? So I don't know why this community uh assets. Sent that letter to the that beneficiary and and if had I not gotten that copy of it. How many people are they sending that kind of letter out? And and what are they doing with their mu- with our money if they don't have money for our beneficiaries? So I did ask Stacy as part of the terms that Hawaii Community uh Assets. Give us a list of all the people they gave emergency money and the amount. So that at the end it adds up to the money we gave them, because we're paying them a fee anyway for to administer this money. So on, unless they give us a list of names and 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 you know, it's confidential, it's our money. So it's confidential in the administration, um, how do we know that they use that money for that purpose? You know? So I think terms and conditions are critical for the board to know.
Yeah, and and I think this threshold of 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 fifty thousand dollars. You know, it's not the Board Chair's. Decision. To not execute the grant agreement, the board already spoke. Right? We are giving this grantee this grant. But the Board Chair's. Part of the execution piece of the contract is a chance to put their eyes on. The final product before it is signed and executed to ensure that proper safeguards are in place. Board intent, as the action item was presented, is is um. Is accurate. And uh allows the Board Chair to be a part of that that process. That that was the thinking. Through that uh. That threshold, so. I still think it's. A good thing.
So I didn't see something in here, and of course, we got a hundred fifty pages more, but however, um. You remember, um.
This is the, this is the big.
Well, this is involved.
The hill to climb over, this one right here, yeah.
Yeah, well, uh, this might be related, um, you know, um. We had a settlement. A big settlement. And. Un- unbeknownst to administration, it didn't come before the board. And and they signed it and paid it out. Seven hundred thousand dollars, you know? So how do we protect administration and the board from from something like that? Because maybe it didn't affect us too much because um insurance covered most of it. But that's not the point. The point is that we settled for that kind of money and that's on our record, so.
Everett, would that be a dispersment?
Um, that would, I mean, that would still be probably, you know, there were other agreements which now has a dollar threshold as well. Sorry.
Yeah.
Uh, that's, there's other agreements, right, that also has a dollar threshold, um.
That would fall into what Chair Emerita just explained, that that.
Yes.
Settlement, yeah, so Chair, um. Fifty thousand dollars. It's the bottom one. So all other agreements of fifty thousand dollars or greater requires the Board Chair's final.
Anything more than fifty?
Any more than fifty.
Yeah.
Well, that was.
Now, you know, if 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 you wanna add, if you think we should add. Another category in there that has a higher dollar threshold, like let's say two fifty. That requires the board approval. We can put in something like that. But right now, any agreement over fifty thousand dollars, so as an example, that seven hundred thousand dollar payout. Would require the Board Chair's oversight.
I think we should should just leave it like that.
Final, yeah, yeah. So that puts in that safeguard.
Yeah.
Okay, and then, uh, I'm sorry, ever, anything else?
Um, I guess if it's all right, could I ask for the uh, the uh. As to the Corporation Council contracts and amendments, uh, that now also has a board approval regardless of amount. Um, does that in? I mean, there are also, I mean, there are certainly legal services contracts that um. Corporate council office is responsible for, um. Will procure and amend as necessary. There's also other contracts that fall under the Corp Counsel Office. Shred services, uh, record storage, um, you know, legal uh research services. Um, I guess is the intent that all of those would also require, um. Board Chair approvals.
Well, I mean, typically. You execute a contract like we just approved a vendor list, right? With with some new vendors, maybe, I don't know, so. Corp counsel now goes and negotiates a contract with that vendor for as need services. And that contract remains that way unless it is further amended later, right? It has specific rates.
Yeah.
What they're gonna do, so that first pass at that execution of that first contract. Has the Board Chair's involvement as well, and then if. Let's say, like, as an example, a dentist's contract is a perfect example, that needs to be amended, right? It was done in twenty nineteen, we need to update the rates. Cause they're outdated, that would require the Board Chair's oversight as well.
Okay. Uh, and then again, just there's our other contracts, I guess the intention is also that those other contracts for more. Operational services, they all fall under the Corp Counsel contract, they're part of our budget, again, like. Record storage, shred services, um, you know, there aren't necessarily like legal professional services. Um, my reading here is also that those would have required board approval, I mean, Board Chair approval, excuse me.
I think um the all other agreements, fifty thousand should have a Board Chair. Right now it doesn't.
So this is all other agreements less than fifty?
Yes.
Which is the CEO is the final, all other agreements above fifty, the Board Chair is the final.
Yeah, and I I kind of would like to have the Board Chair less than fifty, and the reason for that is when we have, um. Let's say a land development and we require, um, uh. Any kind of uh land use. We wanna know what we're paying out, and I know I've asked in the past for numbers. From Corp Counsel and never got it, so. I think, let let's say we got a survey, a land, we wanna know if it, is it gonna cost uh twenty thousand, fifty thousand? Hundred thousand?
Are you suggesting there shouldn't even be a threshold that basically all other agree, all other agreements? You would just take the first line. That's the CEO would be the fourth and the Board Chair would be the final?
Yeah.
And you eliminate the second one?
Yeah. I mean, I just think that other, we gotta know what, I I think it's im- imprudent. I mean, it's, I think it's prudent for us to know what we're getting to any kind of contract doing. Um, unless you ask or you're aware. Um, our CEO and our um Corp Counsel has the authority to sign off because that's part of operations. But you know, a good example was the um, the sale of this um, this shopping center. And we we hired the attorney from McCormick, I mean. McCorston. You know, we didn't see any of those numbers. And I asked for how much McCorston was charging us for the job they were doing. And if I recall, um, when it came time for the McCorston attorney to sign off. To the banks, he refused to, and I had to ask Klein to go and and sign that that uh document. So, you know, in in. In my mind, I thought, geez. How can I not know what we're paying McCorston? That's part of this whole deal, land it land uh land purchase deal.
Okay. Sure, we can change that. Yeah, so thanks for the feedback.
Sorry, I guess if this dollar threshold is being eliminated, uh, can I also seek clarification if. Other agreements are intended to include. Other types of land use agreements, leases, licenses, rights of entry. Um, other types of documents that, um, again, are administrative, they're part of our. They have been to this point. Part of our operational, um, you know, business, um, that gets signed off by the CEO. Um, and if that's, there's a desire to have that all shifted over to the board.
Is that what you mean? The the lights?
To be in that detail. I mean, I think there's correspondence between administration and and Board Chair. What people are doing, and that's all I care about. I I mean, I don't see that there has to be.
I don't see that there has to be a a review and signing of that kind of operational contract. Um, but I thought that the purchase of that land next door was a big transaction and that we should have had our answers. So, but I know what you're saying, that all the leases going on at Kakahaku and all, no, that's operational.
So Everett, are you saying that you need more clarification on what all other agreements means?
Yes, that's correct. So even other things, um, you know. Uh, cooperative agreements, um, memorandums of understanding, um, I think there's been. Again, things that we've executed with other organizations, uh, that we felt was. You know, operational or just preliminary, or they they kind of just facilitate. Uh, our coordination activities that we otherwise.
I I see, you're saying if you eliminate the dollar threshold, this is no longer a da- a money thing. This is an all agreement thing.
Correct, so this has been the catch-all that we've used. Um, when looking to the CEO's authority to just sign off on other types of agreements that don't have a, you know, a commitment of OHA money.
E- even if you put one dollar. You gotta have a monetary threshold to indicate that this is monetary in nature.
Yeah, well, just to be informed.
Right.
If if you don't sign.
I don't, I I don't disagree.
We're not gonna know, you know, uh, the board doesn't know if if. If the chair doesn't sign. So I just to send a memo to the chair is is, you know, helpful.
So it needs to have a monetary threshold. Even if it's a low threshold.
Uh, that would be uh helpful in knowing, ensuring that we're compliant with the policy and delegation. That, you know, again, this is a little bit of a shift, so we recognize that, and I don't think we're trying to.
Yeah, yeah.
To deny that.
I see what you mean though.
Yeah.
So, okay, yeah.
Thank you.
We'll make sure whatever threshold i- it meets.
Oh, I'm not talking about pencils and erasers.
Yeah, 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 right, 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 yeah, 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 okay. We'll 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 propose something that I think strikes the 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 balance and spirit of what you're talking about. Um, okay. Okay, that's contract executions. The next one is dispersments. This is, um, you know, I'm sorry. This is um another very detailed matrix, um, but I think it's important, whether it's. Payments on purchase orders less than fifty, above fifty. Check issuances less than twenty-five hundred, above twenty-five hundred, mileage reimbursements with those thresholds. Request for any type of reimbursements with a fifteen hundred dollar threshold. Um. Has these various different. Um, levels of a- approval, so like, as an example, um. You know, payments on purchase orders less than fifty thousand, staff initiates, program manager is the first, the director can be final. But there, it's only final if it's non-executive staff. Program manager and up. If it's executive level, the final is the COO. But that excludes the COO and the CEO. If it's the CEO and the CEO. Then the final for CEO level, which is COO, CFO and CC, or any senior directors. Is the CEO. And then the Board Chair is the final for the CEO and the Board of Trustees. So if the CEO wants to make a purchase less than fifty thousand dollars, the Board Chair is the final. If the board wants to make a purchase for fifty thousand dollars or less, the Board Chair is the final. That's that's how that's written, and that's basically how every one of those are written, depending on thresholds. So if uh, if if a staff member wants to. Request a check issuance of less than twenty-five hundred dollars, that staff member initiates that reimbursement. Or dispersment. And a program manager is the final to approve. Mileage reimbursements, the same. Request for reimbursements, the same. Also, disbursements are subject to certifications made by the requister, you know, this. Just just to compare. If you look at like what Colin Kippen did, it's it's nowhere near, this is much more level of detail. And various different examples of dispersments and gives a lot more fidelity than what this had. This was. As an example. Disbursements, payments on purchase orders up to a hundred fifty grand, program manager approved. As an example, dispersments, payments on purchase orders up to a hundred fifty grand, program manager approved. Yeah, over a hundred fifty grand, CEO is the final. There was no board of trustees at all on the current dispersments that exist right now. So this this goes from that to this. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay, next section is travel approvals. Um, we we tweaked some things on here, so for. In for the board of trustees, in-state travel, so you know. Kanani wants to travel somewhere. Chair Emerita initiates board final. If it's out of state travel, trustee initiates, board chair final. If the board chair person is gonna travel. Currently how it works now, the CEO approves the board chair's travel. From my personal perspective, I don't think anyone from the administration should be approving any trustees' travel. But there needs to be some checking balances on that travel. And my original proposal was that the vice chair. Would approve the board chair's travel. But then I was said, I was told, well, the board chair approved appointed the vice chair. So I don't know what is the right check and balance on there, so we landed on this, which was if the board chair person is gonna travel. The final. If board of trustee chairs total cumulative travel costs. Are under ten thousand dollars in a fiscal year, then the board of trustees approves. And it is final, well, the board chair would have to initiate it for final board of trustee approval. So. I'm I'm open to whatever suggestions you have on there. I just think that if the board chair wants to travel someplace. I don't think the CEO or anyone from the administration should be approving any trustees' travel. How do we do it within this table?
I think you just need to keep in mind, uh, Chair, that uh one person cannot approve. His own expenditure.
Yeah.
And and that's why that's that's not possible, not even with the ten thousand dollars there. So you need to choose what uh what avenue. You feel comfortable with as far as somebody.
I was comfortable with the vice chair.
Well.
I mean, I I would trust that anybody was the vice chair. Oh, that's right, yeah, 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 that's right, that's right. Yeah, yeah, no, no, thank you, thank you, thank you, thanks. Been a long day, been a long day. But I was happy with another trustee being that check on oversight.
Yeah, you just need a a two two signature.
Okay.
One approve and what have you. And then they can cut the check, but for you to approve for yourself, no.
No, no, I'm, yeah, okay, so. I think the way it should read then should be board of trustee, chair person travel. And and so prior to this, there was a column for the vice chair in this section, but we took them out. Because we've had to receive feedback that. Um, from my staff, A, maybe that doesn't.
Well, they can go in the BOT slot. It can be vice chair.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Vice chairs, okay, you guys agree with that? Okay, cool. Okay, all right, then, um, if you're looking at the. I'm sorry, I may have used the wrong example in this section. This section was for trustees to travel. I had used Kanani as an example. That would be staff in the next section. So this first section is for trustee level travel. The next session is trustee staff level. So for this one, if one of our staff wanted to travel in-state, that aide or staff member. Initiates their travel request, it goes to the trustee, the trustee is the final or the first, and the COO is the final. For out-of-state travel, the aide staff initiates, the trustee is the first. The board chair is the final. But the board of trustees is informed of that out-of-state travel for a staff member on the board of trustees. Are you, uh, as trustees, who I know are very, you know. Territorial over our staff, does the COO's final approval on your trustee aide or secretary? Make sense to you? Or do you have another suggestion?
I don't care. When it passes me, it's out.
I mean, um, you you would you rather have it just eliminate the COO from the approval? So it's not at the administrative level and the board chair approves? So aide initiates, the trustee says yes, board chair says yes, travel approved. Open to whatever.
Maybe could be multiple, just checks, just to be be clear.
I think CEO should be involved.
CEO?
Yeah, CEO.
CEO?
Because that way she would pass it on to CFO to be paid, right?
Okay, you you have a comment?
I was just uh wondering um how the suggestion of the COO uh came into place. I'm open to what the the thoughts were and um I can see what makes sense in terms of what uh trustee Hona and trustee Lindsay mentioned as well.
So the reason, I mean, that is, that is exactly what exists in here now.
Yeah.
Yeah, we just.
In travel.
We just copied that.
Yeah, that's the first time I'm seeing about.
We haven't been involved in COO.
No, it is.
No, but we haven't been operating like that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I've just seen it like that before.
Yeah. Yeah, right now, as it's currently written, for travel for board of trustee staff. The board chair's office is not even on the matrix. The approving authority for final in-state is the COO, out-of-state, it's the CEO. So the, I guess the question is, 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 do you want to keep that? Final approval for your staff to travel in-state or out-of-state on the administrative side? Or do you want it on the board side?
That's BOT.
Board side?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, okay, so what it would say then is we would eliminate the final for the COO. And it would be final at the board chair level.
So how we have to in incorporate um administration because they execute the travel.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So that travel, but I'm talking just the travel request, right? Aide initiates, trustee says authorize yes, comes to the board chair, board chair says yes. Travel request sent to Ops, Ops books to travel. Yeah? Okay, okay, great. Okay, for non-board of trustee staff, now this is on the admin side. For the administrative staff for in-state travel, um as an example, the staff member would initiate that travel. Uh, the program manager uh could can be the first unless they're also initiating their travel. But at the PIA level, the director is the final for staff or program manager travel. Does that make sense?
No.
Okay, so if you're an admin staff. If you're an advocacy staff member and you need to travel to Hilo, you initiate your travel request. Your program manager, which would be Lena Allah, the director of advocacy or no? Who's the pro? Okay, Michelle, oh yeah, Michelle would be the first and then Lena Allah could approve.
Well, doesn't the CEO approve all travels for administration?
No, not as this is written. You know, it 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 takes some approvals. Off the CEO, COO level and puts it at the director level. You know, I mean, there's a lot of stuff already coming up to them, right? So. It 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 requires final for executive level travel, which excludes the COO and the CEO. So the C, let's for for example, take Hailema for example, right? He is not a COO or the CEO, but he is on the executive leadership team. The COO is the final for his travel. But if the COO. CFO. Or senior directors, everyone but the CEO is approved at the CEO level. And the final for the CEO is the board chair, which is how it is now. So it it just depends on the level you're at, what next level responsibility is for approving that in-state travel. And then on the out-of-state travel, it follows a similar path, except. If the total cumulative travel trips per year exceed three. Or costs exceed five thousand dollars in a fiscal year, then the board chair is the final.
I would, no, I would suggest that you take out where total cumulative uh travel, three trips.
Yeah.
And just leave it at final for CEO and final for all admin staff. Because you need to sign every out-of-state travel that goes from OHA of this, these islands. I I'll share with you an experience. When I worked for Governor Burns, he signed for the whole state out of state. Nobody could travel out of state without the governor's signature on on there.
I got you. So you're just, you're just eliminating, s- starting with the word who's.
Yeah.
I'm fine with that. Okay, and then finally, non-OHA employees. So this is anyone that's not an OHA staff member. As an example, we just went to Tahiti, so Larry Kimura, Kalena Silva, we have um. Uh, Evie briefed uh the the Germany trip yesterday, um and that team. Any non-OHA employee requires the board chair's approval to travel on OHA's expense. So the staff member would initiate. So as an example, you know, we're gonna go do repatriation this year. Comic Con initiates, Stacy approves, board chair approves. Okay, next section is vacation. This is the last one. Yep, yep.
Even uh reimbursements for, let's say, gas mileage. There needs to be a limit of when the subcommittee turned that into. They said, some, some um trustees are submitting uh reimbursement requests six months ago.
Oh.
And that's, that's not good for administrations budget department. So we need to set some kind of timeline for for uh.
Sure. I mean, I think that um doesn't live in the delegation of authority, but it would live in a travel. Board of trustee, operational, standard operation procedure policy. Um, that probably already exists in the travel department that should apply to the board suite, but maybe we need to codify in the board suite. Right, yeah. You're you're talking either the trustee or the trustee staff submitting the reimbursement, just initiating the reimbursement.
To um allow our administration to process all these.
And that's on our end, the initiation of that reimbursement, yeah. So maybe we need to look at our travel policy.
Yeah, I I think it's a verification part and helping administration, because if they gotta go six months behind, wait, what you post this and. For final those receipts, I mean, yeah, that doesn't help them. So yes, should be right in return, have everything ready for our staff to submit.
Or maybe if you don't submit your travel, you don't go on the next travel trip until everything is done. I don't know, you know, gotta be had some consequences for not submitting your travel reimbursements on time. Okay. All right, last one is vacation. Last one is vacation, um. Vacation requests, you know, we. Amended this slightly, but you can take a look at what was and what is now proposed, um somewhat similar. But in any case, admin staff up to forty consecutive hours, that's the program manager. Uh, more than forty requires the COO for managers and executive assistants to director. Any director regardless of hours, the CEO is the final. On our board side, if it's one of your staff members taking more than or up to forty consecutive hours, consecutive hours of vacation. You approve that, just let the board chair's office know. For if it's more than forty hours consecutive, you initiate, CEO is the second, board chair is the final. Uh, if the COO wants to take vacation regardless of hours, COO initiates, the CEO is the final. And finally, if the CEO wants to take vacation, the CEO initiates, the board chair is the final, which I think is how it is right now. Um, and then the final thing is just reminding um anyone that has that that. Fits on this matrix. Uh, that procurement officers and personnel with delegated procurement authority to conduct or participate in a procurement process. Are required to attend all applicable state procurement office trainings and webinars. Applicable training ensures delegated procurement personnel receive the appropriate training are in compliance with one oh three D. And then finally, it also reinforces that this new delegation of procurement authority supersedes this. And remains in effect until modified or revoked by the board. That is the matrix.
So Chair, I um, I just wonder if you would uh like to consider. Uh, delegating HOPA to administration because all in the last thirteen years. The CEO always held HOPA because it's pencils and erasers, basically. So I I just thinking that that would lighten your, your um, your workload.
Yeah.
And that would maybe make it easier on um, I don't know, um, administration to do the small stuff. Don't. Um, agree with me that HOPA has always been CEO, okay? Look at me like you, I'm crazy.
Well, I mean, so that uh, I don't think would be in this delegation.
No, no.
It it would, it would be.
That's up to you.
Oh, 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 okay. Oh, I got you, I got you, I got you, okay, yeah.
I just, I'm just sharing with you.
Point taken, yeah, okay. Okay, next page is page one eighteen. It says, uh, according to the Hawaii direct investment policy, it just added the word may and delegates. Uh, the very next page, one eighteen, uh, this is section eight of the Hawaii direct investment policy. It would be page one eighteen. Hawaii direct investment policy, I think in in maybe your big document, it's page three eighty-nine. But on mine, it says one eighty, one eighty-five, yeah. Just right there. So just like the section one thousand delegation of authority, it says the board of trustees may delegates. It may may delegate, I'm sorry, to the CEO. Right, the HRS gives the authority for this board to delegate. And 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 it may delegate. If it if it like to, that's all that adds. Appendix seventy-six, this is actually the Akina amendment. Trustee Akina's amendment, um. We are on page one thirty-nine. It would be appendix, formerly appendix six, now appendix seven. Sorry.
I I don't know where where the committees would fit in, uh, fit in, but this one I see, this is a island committee as well. Where would we reflect that?
The Hawaiian investments?
Oh, investment, direct investment policy. The delegation of authority.
The board of trustees may delegate to CEO the authority to do all these things. As it relates to the Hawaii direct investment policy, we're on page one eighteen of the appendices.
Can't just be a committee, are you saying initially and then it comes to the, because it's saying it goes to the.
Well, and.
But you need to insert that.
Yeah, I mean, it says the board of trustees may delegate the authority, um.
I think that's initially putting it together to present. Okay, sorry, is that?
Well, I guess a good question would be right now, have we delegated this to the to the administration?
Uh, I guess to answer your 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 last question, Chair, uh, this was a delegation, right? Uh, as stated in the policy, so if it's uh changes to a may, then we are. Taking that change to mean that we have to come to the board for an actual approval of that delegation of authority. So that is changes from this being a delegation. Changes from this being a delegation to a option for a delegation, which means we need to come to the board for further action. And then, yeah, I think, yeah, and then I. Yeah, so and I think that's where the board bylaws already set forth the, yeah. Okay, thank you.
You're good. Yeah, 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 okay, got it. Okay, um next page is page one thirty nine, the Akina amendment. This is uh I'm gonna recognize the uh the trustee to to speak to his amendment.
I'll share with any. Own this, but basically, I think this is a good thing to call us to a code of conduct. In the decorum and the courtesy and respect with which we treat one another and speak about the decisions we make. So I have no disagreement with that. I wanted to suggest adding some language to this. In keeping with our First Amendment rights and our responsibilities as. Public officials elected by constituencies. So if we if we go to, is that page one thirty nine?
Yep.
Standards of conduct. We're looking at.
Yep, one thirty nine. Part one, board of trustees' code of conduct, B, standards of conduct.
All right, I'm getting some assistance on where to quote.
And just for the record, uh your suggestion was to add the word and. To operate in a nonpartisan manner, but then um strike and speak with one voice.
And I think you've incorporated that i- in the wording here, but I had further suggestion to that as well. And I would like to ma- make that suggestion at this time.
Sure.
Let's see what I should read. Okay, duty of loyalty and duty of compliance. I'm reading page one thirty. One forty?
One forty one.
Okay.
It, yeah, it's.
It's a long one forty one. Item five, duty of loyalty and compliance. With support for board decisions. Trustees have a fiduciary duty to act with loyalty to the institution and in compliance with its governing framework. And duly adopted decisions. Trustees are encouraged to exercise independent judgment and engage in open, respectful deliberation. During the decision making process, including expressing dissenting views. However, once the board has taken official action, trustees are expected to uphold and support those decisions. Even if they personally disagree and to comply with all duly enacted executive policies and directives. I have no problem with any of that wording, but I do want to add to it a clarification by May. It would be additional wording, but it would say this. Continued expression of a differing opinion, even after a matter has been voted upon. Does not constitute a lack of support for a decision. Members of the board are allowed to communicate disagreement with the decision without fear of being silenced. I'll read it again if you'd like.
Do you have copies of it by any chance?
Um I I have edited copy here that I I can have circulated quickly. Continued expression of a differing opinion, even after a matter has been voted upon. Does not con- constitute a lack of support for a decision. Members of the board are allowed to communicate disagreement with the decision without fear of being silenced. I'm suggesting adding language like this. And would submit this as a model.
Yeah.
For that.
Why don't you submit it to staff, Remy?
Yes.
Karina, we'll get it in to the um track change document and then we can all kind of look at it. Sounds reasonable to me.
Very good.
Yeah.
And please understand, I I'm not asking for the removal of any language that supports. Our standing together behind policy that we adopt. I am simply pointing out that it's important for us to can provide respect for the First Amendment rights. To speak freely of the each individual as well as the fact that we're. Elected officials who have a constituency, so we represent points of view that may vary from each others.
So just so I'm clear, on page one thirty nine, it is it is as you proposed, or you're gonna add language to page one thirty nine?
I'm just gonna add these two sentences.
Okay.
And I'll have this sent over.
Okay.
Your team that has that.
Page one forty one.
Page one forty one, that is.
Yeah, and then page one forty one, which is the duty of loyalty.
Yeah.
Yes.
And duty of uh com- one forty one, and that that one you have uh abandoned language.
Yes, that I I'm adding two sentences to that paragraph.
Okay. Wait to look at it, but yeah. Okay, okay.
Uh uh can I?
Yeah.
I just wanna give us some some history um from way back um two thousand thirteen um. The board or a number of uh members of the board tried to incorporate that. The wording of one uh one voice uh from the board. And it was always defeated because we as elected officials, we have a right to our. Own opinion of different in initiatives and issues. So and same thing as what um trustee Akina mentioned. That doesn't mean there's uh any less support of the board as a whole, but. You know, and you can take an example like the Mauna Kea. Um some people are for the telescope and some people are for the Mauna. And that's that's how firmly the board stood split. Um in the past, so it was never passed as a policy. Never passed. So there's never been a one voice policy. What? One voice, one.
As language looks like? Yeah, yeah, okay.
Uh thank you for that sport, Trust Hulu. Um I think that trustee Hulu brings up a very good example. That's our position on the building of a telescope on Mauna Kea. The board in its wisdom has chosen not to take a position on the sighting of the thirty meter telescope. Still, it it has taken a position to Malama the Aina. The position to stand for Hawaiian values in the in the area and stewardship. And leaves open to different board members' personal opinion on whether there should be a telescope or not. And we have differing views, but we do express them peacefully. We express them maintaining the unity of the board.
It's a good example. Okay, well, we'll take a look at that and uh we'll we'll add it in, whatever whatever your staff sends in. Please, um I mean, I know uh Alina and the team will be working on this tomorrow. All day and um they'll have to be uploaded by Monday, so I know they're gonna try and get it done as soon as possible.
We'll get it in this right away.
Oh, yeah, go ahead. Yeah, trust Susan. So so I. Oh, I was gonna wait till later, but um so given the example of trustee Akina uh the Mauna Kea and then OHA not taking a stance. Uh that's a situation where this board didn't adopt or had an action to adopt. You know, or support or oppose, right? But things that the board does adopt as a as a policy or or support or oppose. I think it's important somewhere in there to, if you have your OHA trustee cap on, right? Yeah, of course. I mean, First Amendment, I mean, basically, I didn't support the vote, right? Right? That's that's one form of doing it, but. I think it's and and maybe this is not nothing we need to write down, but I think just in general. Speaking in opposition in certain ways potentially could be. OHA doesn't support it because we we had conversations about how we all represent OHA. Um but so maybe. Doesn't need to be in writing, but just keeping that in mind, I guess, moving forward. I think that's important to note as well.
Trustee.
Yeah.
That's a very good point.
Yeah.
And I often find myself in situations where I I need to say.
Right.
Um this is my personal opinion.
Right, 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 right.
As an individual trustee.
Something general.
Not necessarily the view of the board.
Yeah, right.
And I think we we should exercise that responsibility wherever appropriate.
Individual capacity, not a trustee, yeah. Yeah.
I support that. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee.
I I just wanted to also speak on that. I think I don't think we could take a stance on. The telescope because it had nothing to do with chapter ten or any our business and we kept working towards. You know, su- supporting our people up there and it it eventually came down to stewardship and management.
Yeah, it's important.
Thank you.
Okay, well. That's it. This.
Uh for both changes.
Yeah.
Our individual.
Ideally tomorrow, you know, tomorrow by noon, it would be, I think, nice for for the staff. Um so that they don't have to put in too much work on a weekend because um Le Hua, who will be responsible for uploading. The the body of the document um by uh eight AM Monday morning. So she technically comes in at six. Yeah, it'll include his. So you have a clean version of this um. Reflective of some of the changes we talked about today. Monday, and then our plan uh is to come back in on next week, Thursday, ten AM. Um to um review this one more time and see if we have a. Uh as long as well as the by um as well as the bylaws and and if we're feel comfortable voting. To support or not support um both of these proposals. And uh.
Are we able to make any changes next week, Thursday and and vote on it?
Yeah, yes, if we wanted to make an amendment, I believe so.
At that time?
Yeah, yeah, so we could. Okay. So yeah, if if it if we have a an amendment that um. Has a simple majority vote, right? You would need to propose that amendment and have this simple majority of the board to adopt that amendment into the proposal. Then that would affect what's on the table and that would reset the first reading to the next meeting of the board. Another first reading. I s- I see Everett over there looking, does that does that make sense, Everett? Help us out, man, because it's been about twelve hours already. We've been working today, so.
I'm sorry, uh uh the amendments that are made next week, Thursday.
Let's say, so we're gonna, we're gonna, everything we talked about today, we're gonna update.
Right.
We're gonna agenda is a new agenda tomorrow. We're gonna upload that new document on Monday. And that's gonna be placed in front of the board.
Yeah.
On Thursday, and if trustee Suzo has an amendment.
Yeah.
For the board to consider that changes language.
Mm-hmm.
And a simple majority adopts that amendment.
Uh-huh.
Does that require first reading again?
No, cuz that, the board would still approve, right, the amended version of those executive policy manuals and then. That approval would be the first reading. I think the issue is more if on second reading, an amendment were made. Then that is what I would see resets the it back to the first reading. Because you haven't taken a, you haven't done the first reading yet, right? When you, I mean, if there's a difference.
Talking about two different things. My understanding is, what he's saying is, we're doing first reading next week, Thursday. If he proposes a change to it on that Thursday. You're saying that's still considered first reading?
Yes, because he's gonna give the change to him before we cut.
No, no, we're saying in-house uh on Thursday.
On Thursday, on the table.
The deadline is tomorrow, but it's a next week, we we. Yeah, I forgot I want this on propose another change that resets.
Gotta do it again, right?
Yeah, you're correct on that.
Yeah.
That's my understanding. If it's different, that's.
Yeah, once once the document is on the table as a live motion to adopt and there's a amendment to that. And that amendment is adopted by a simple majority that now changes that proposed action item. Then that requires an additional first reading.
Yeah, that's my understanding, but Everett, you guys have done it differently.
Yeah, I mean, I think we've done it differently. I think we've allowed amendments at that first reading. Um but if that's, I mean, if. We've been doing it wrong, we can, yeah, we can re- we can review it.
Attorney of the day, whatever, and uh. We'll have an opportunity next week. If and if, you know, if someone has an amendment to propose and and it makes sense and we uh adopt it, then they would do another first reading, you know. Whatever it takes to get this right and to get a good governance document adopted, let's do it. Okay, okay, let's move on to the last item on our agenda. Is community concerns and celebrations. Le Hua, do you have anyone sign up to speak on this item?
Yes, we have one person. We have Jermaine Myers.
Hey, Jermaine, please join us. Thanks for being so patient today, Jermaine, and you are recognized for five minutes. Community concerns and celebrations.
Aloha, honorable trustees. My name is Jermaine Myers and mahalo for the opportunity to share my community concerns. I would like to complete my earlier testimony regarding unlawful discrimination based on an employee's marital status. Denying promotions, creating unequal pay and allowing unfair treatment. To illustrate, I will finish quoting Chair Kahela's statement at the July twenty fifth, twenty twenty five BOT meeting. The conflict, I believe, just to clarify, is that you have two senior directors from the same household. Now responsible for a significant amount of OHA staff over the course of a month. And receiving a ten percent compensation boost, just to be clear. This was his statement referring specifically to two senior directors. Not an administrative assistant and a senior director, not a manager and a senior director, but two senior directors. Such remarks reflect a failure to follow best practices. And most critically, they raise concerns of unlawful discrimination based on marital status, which is explicitly prohibited under the law. You are not recognized. Throughout my years of testifying before various bodies, the legislature, city council, DHL, DLR. And numerous neighborhood boards around Oahu, I have never ever heard a chairperson, Hawaiian or non-Hawaiian. Tell me or other native Hawaiian testifiers, you are not recognized. To silence us from speaking. Even more troubling, Chair Kahela begins meetings by reminding everyone that testimony is limited to five minutes. Yet allows some to speak for over ten minutes without interruption, then engages in extended dialogue with them. While cutting others off. This type of selective enforcement, lawlessness and discriminatory practice erodes trust in this board. And in those trustees who permit or enable such conduct. Why use OHA trust funds to hire an in-house legal counsel, the point I was trying to make earlier when I got cut off? If the chair violates laws, bylaws and executive policies as he desires. Based on his unthethered opinions and personal agenda. Discriminatory practices, whether against staff, administration or beneficiaries, create division within the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. And the Lahui. Some are given special treatment while others are denied. This behavior not only damages relationships, but also creates serious vulnerabilities and liabilities. For OHA's financial trust funds. Most importantly, it breeds distrust toward the very institution that should be serving us all. During the recent MIMO ad hoc committee discussions, further concerns arose. The chair appointed Elena Farden as a voting member while designating Kapu Hana, her supervisor, as non-voting. Claiming this was to avoid a conflict of interest, but what conflict of interest was truly being avoided? This arrangement places decision-making power in the hands of a subordinate. While the contractual consequences for a failed MIMO fall upon Kapu Hana. If she bears the responsibility, should she not also have a. If she bears the responsibility, should she not also have a leading role in amending the MIMO? The pattern is clear, anti-certain staff, anti-certain trustees, anti-certain beneficiaries. This is discrimination, whether you agree with it or not. For these and many other reasons, I humbly urge the trustees to consider a reorganization of the BOT chair leadership. To restore fairness, accountability and trust. Kailua pu, God bless all of you.
No one else has signed up?
August twenty-eighth, ten o'clock in the morning, we have one, uh, two items on the agenda and they will be, um, our bylaws. Proposed bylaws and the proposed executive policy manual, and that's it, so we'll just focus on that. Uh, so we'll convene at ten o'clock next week, Thursday, August twenty-eighth. Trustees, any other announcements?
Chair, I moved that we adjourn.
Okay, trustees, we have a motion to adjourn, any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Ahuna.
Aye.
Trustee Akaka.
Aye.
Trustee Akina.
Aye.
Trustee Galutaria.
Aye.
Trustee Lindsay. Trustee Susa.
Aye.
And Chair Kahela.
Aye.
We have seven, yes, we are adjourned.
Nice work today, trustees, mahalo.